We'll call to order this meeting of the Huntsville City Council. It is September 28th, 6 o'clock, we are 6:02. We are gathered in the council chambers and we welcome all of you who have joined us this evening. Our invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Frank Broyles and we will be honored to have our pledge of allegiance tonight led by one of our regular attendees, Mr. Jerry Cox. Reverend Broyles, please stand for the invocation.
Let us unite in prayer. In a world where divisiveness seems on the rise, we rise up this night to further the common cause of a city uniting. And we thank you, great God, giver of life and of life together, for this extraordinary responsibility and opportunity. And we accept the responsibilities and opportunities that are before us tonight. We do not take for granted that we have what it takes to do the work. And we pray that that will happen tonight as we hear and listen and discern and deliberate together, that we will further the best of vibrant democracy. We will not be afraid of conflict or difference this evening, but we will reach forward for the common good. And our prayer is that we will be granted what it takes to do that. And that as we listen and communicate and deliberate, we will learn. And when we leave this room tonight, civic health will be advanced and signs of progress will be our takeaway. And so now we govern and we do it grateful with our common confidence in the hope that never dies. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the other nations who are under our umbrella, the invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Broyles. Thank you, Mr. Cox. We are honored to have you lead our pledge tonight. You always represent the veterans of our city so well. We extend a special welcome tonight to the scouts of Troop 70 at First Baptist Church. They're here working on their communications merit badge. They will have opportunity to see lots of communication tonight. Welcome. Council members, you have two sets of minutes before you. The first are the minutes of the regular meeting held September 14, 2017. Are there any changes or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as presented. Item 3B, minutes of the special session held September 14, 2017. Are there any changes or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes will be accepted as read. We have no resolutions or special recognitions today at night, but I believe Mayor Battle, well, Mayor Battle and I have a video that we are going to be presenting tonight and I will ask Mayor Battle to introduce that as he did last week at another meeting that we were at.
Thank you, Madam President. Last week, we were at Women Honoring Women and part of Women Honoring Women was to honor the women in management positions here at City Hall. And they did a great video that highlighted a lot of the work that is done right here in City Hall by women. They asked me to come up and speak about it and when I spoke about it, I said, "I really never thought about it being women. I just, I thought we just hired the best people." And that's kind of the response that we had out of it is we have some great people who are in leadership, who are good partners with us, who happen to be women, and we'd like to show you a video now to honor them, just as they were honored last Wednesday night.
I knew I was going to renovate the Woody Anderson Ford dealership, but I had no idea how to do it and how to get there from here. So when I called the city, the first person I called answered the phone and it was Kathy Martin and she helped me navigate through an unbelievable process.
Very busy. Huntsville is growing. I can honestly say, being the city engineer in a progressive city like Huntsville, is an end goal for me.
To be here is really a dream come true. I've had an opportunity to work in many cities in North Alabama and Huntsville has just surpassed any goals that I ever could have imagined.
Every area of town, we're doing lots and lots of work and trying to revitalize a lot of the older areas of town.
We have some of the best people working for the city of Huntsville that I think we've probably ever had. They are genuine servant leaders.
My passion is in making our city beautiful. When you look around and you have a clean city, it makes you feel better.
Great women leaders are quite often motivated by service and by mission-driven work.
The goal was always to save all the lives of the animals that came in. We're an open-admission shelter, so we deal with about 5,000 pets a year. And to be saving 90% of the cats and 90% of the dogs, it truly is a day-to-day process.
There's nothing that makes you feel better when you've tackled a challenge, you've accomplished it, and made someone's life a little bit better, too.
We're really managing the growth and partnering with those who are interested in locating here and making Huntsville their home.
We've all been to cities that do look bad and you're like, "Why would I want to live here? Why would I want to bring my business here?" It is an economic driving force for our city.
In all of these tasks, it's really important to understand that there's a team behind this. You know, no one does this by themselves. I certainly don't.
We do a great job of working together within the city as a team to make sure that all of the needs are taken care of.
Women sometimes don't recognize that they have a skill set that they haven't marketed yet. I think it's incredibly important to have women at the table. First of all, we bring a completely different perspective.
I think being a woman in that field gives you an advantage.
We may look at it a little bit different because of our life experiences.
Because we are nurturers, we figure out how to bring the best out of everyone around the table.
Having a women's perspective and personality, you know, to that type of project or that type of environment can be very beneficial.
Follow your instincts. Your instincts are usually right.
Leading in an area where you have passion can be the best leadership of all. For any young woman today, I would advise them to find a mentor.
I've been fortunate. I've had some incredible mentors along the way.
We're more than willing to help out someone who's aspiring and just getting started in the workforce. I could not even begin to do the renovation until the road was closed, until the ditch was taken care of. And that all had to be done before I could even consider the renovation. And so kudos to the mayor and congratulations to the women of the city.
Kathy Anderson.
I knew I was going to renovate.
It was so good, we're gonna watch it again.
The Woody Anderson Ford dealership, but I had no idea how to do it and how to.
Kathy Anderson followed her instincts to create this video, to thank the leaders of the city. And the women who were represented in that video, I think, represent all of our department heads. All of our department heads are men, women, are all servant leaders and do a remarkable job of caring for the people of this city. And so this is a tribute to all of you and that's why I felt like we needed to share that tonight. So, thanks to Kathy Anderson for putting that together. We have a number of announcements tonight, council members. We have two items that will require unanimous consent. Item 14B, and I just learned item 15L also will require unanimous consent. Please note also that 14AG has been deleted. And Mr. Kling, I believe you have an item you would like to add to the agenda.
That's correct, Madam President. It would be, from what the Assistant City Attorney has told me, something that would be separate from the budget ordinance per se and would not be part of an amendment to the budget ordinance.
And this, would you like to read the agenda item or would you want me to do that?
Okay. This would be for consideration by the council of a one-time bonus for retired city employees and beneficiaries of deceased members or deceased retirees of the city of Huntsville.
And that will become item AL. Do any council members have an objection to adding this item to the agenda? Since there is no objection, it will be added, it will become item AL. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do, however, have a number of public hearings to be held. Item 6A1, now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Ms. Jordan, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Counsel, this resolution identifies 43 properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. Thirty-three of the property owners are local and 10 are out of state. All 43 owners received written notification by first-class mail that they were in violation of the ordinance and were given 14 days to correct the violation. And they all failed to resolve their issues, so city staff cut the properties and now we're coming before you to ask for your approval to assess the cost.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this item? Mr. Cox, please come to the podium.
Jerry Cox, 4029 Telstar Circle. Thank you, Madam President. There's one property in my neighborhood, in fact, on my street, that at least for the last two years, every time it's been mowed in the summer, the city has had to do it. It's a vacant property. I mean, it's not a vacant property, the house is vacant. But, of course, the grass gets to the required height that triggers the city to issue the complaint. But then they're given two weeks for it to continue to grow and then they schedule, you know, for the city to come out and cut it. So it's really a hay field each time that the city comes out and mows it. So we have the hay laying there, the sidewalk is covered with the hay, the street curb is covered with hay. And this happens every time for at least the last two years, so about three or four times each summer. Apparently, the ordinance is weak or there's some issue that this kind of a problem should not prevail. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Are there, is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
Move to approve the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion, questions for Ms. Jordan? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to 6A2. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cleanup and removal of debris against certain properties. Ms. Jordan.
Yes, Dr. Robinson, we're requesting your approval to assess the property owners of 512 Lisa Lane Northwest for the cost of cleaning up and removing debris at this location. The total cost of this cleanup was $206.52.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Keith. Are there any comments or discussion?
Can I just make one comment?
Mr. Keith.
If possible, can we get Mr. Cox, Keith's information to sort of explain our ordinance and why it is what it is?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And Mr. Cox does, he's been a great partner in making us aware of properties in his neighborhood. I'll be happy to talk to him again.
If we had, that's fine. Thank you.
Absolutely. Are there any other comments or discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A3, now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at 500 Ryson Avenue Northeast, Huntsville, Alabama. Ms. Jordan.
Yes, Dr. Robinson, you're looking at pictures of 500 Ryson Avenue. This resolution will authorize the demolition of the unsafe conditions found at this location. The property was initially inspected by staff on July 3, 2017, with further review on July 26 by an independent contractor who determined the structure was not economically feasible to repair. You might remember, our consulting goes out and evaluates the property. This property scored an 88. A rating of 50 or more is deemed to be not feasible for repair. An official notice was sent by certified and first-class mail to the property owners requesting demolition and removal of the structure by the 31st of August. That didn't happen, so we're before you tonight to ask for your approval to demolish the structure.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Seeing none, the public hea-- oh, sir.
It's 500 Ryson.
500 Ryson. Please come to the podium, sir. Give us your name and your address and you're welcome to make your comments. The podium is right there. Give us your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is John Todd and I did once own this property.
What is your current address, sir?
1407 Maisible Road.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Todd.
Thank you. You sent me an official notice, so you probably have a copy of that. And then you sent me another notice that you wanted to present to the city council for demolition. I do not own this property. I once did. I lost it to taxes. I tried to get it back. It's very convoluted who owns this property. It's gone back and forth. They even have a lawyer involved. I don't want to get him involved in the sordid details. I'd have to pay him. But I did, there were two parts to this, two parts to this parcel. There's a nine-foot strip and a 40-foot strip. The house is on the 40-foot strip. I did, I was successful in getting the nine-foot strip back and I do own that proudly. We couldn't pin down who owned this. It's gone back and forth to the state two or three times. I would like to get the property back. I would like to make it nice. It's a 113-year-old house. They poured the nails when they built it. Y'all know about these old houses. But if you're having difficulty, I was having difficulty, you can tell, y'all don't know who owns it. I don't own it.
Thank you.
But I didn't want you to condemn it without speaking on its behalf because I want that property back.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. It would appear that we have a question of ownership? Ms. Jordan?
Yes, we did find the correct owner. He's correct. He did receive notification initially. It was in that in-between phase between ownership and a tax sale and so we did find the appropriate owner.
And that appropriate owner has been notified?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion, any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A4, now is the time and place for a public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-585, amending zoning ordinance, Article 92, Board of Adjustment, Section 92.5, Powers and Duties, subsection 92.5.3, permitted uses as special exceptions by amending subsection 92.5.318 and subsection 92.5.336 to update BOZA approval term limits. This was set at the August 10, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This proposed zoning ordinance amendment is concerning Article 92. Article 92 in the zoning ordinance addresses the Board of Zoning Adjustment process as well as it addresses our special exceptions. Currently, we have two special exceptions which will be addressed tonight pertaining to Neighborhood Business C1 and Neighborhood Business C2 districts. Currently, in order for businesses to sell any alcohol after 12:00 a.m., they have to come in and request a special exception from the Board of Zoning Adjustment, as well as if they wish to have entertainment, they also have to come forth to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Typically, when the board grants these special exceptions, they are on an annual basis. This particular proposal is to change that from an annual basis to every three years.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Kling, second from Mr. Culver. Council members, do you have any questions for Ms. Nichols? Any discussion? Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Nichols, what brought about this requested change? It sounds terrible, like a terrible idea to me.
Well, planning staff, this has been a consideration for a while, as well as we've had several business owners express interest in having maybe a little bit more than a year to have the board evaluate these particular special exceptions, especially if they have no issues. The board can always come back and revoke their privilege at any time and they can also impose that they come back in a more timely manner, whether that be every six months or every year or every two years. That will be up to the Board of Zoning Adjustment discretion.
What gives them the right to revoke their privilege at any time if they have a three-year approval?
Things such as noise, any other police issues, any trash nuisances. Typical violations of city ordinances can cause the board to revoke this privilege.
Okay, so would, who would request that the board reconsider or revoke their privileges? Citizens, like if they're having trouble in their neighborhood business district?
Yes.
Can they, they can go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment and say, "We'd like this situation reviewed"?
Yes, they can bring those matters up to staff and staff can ask the Board of Zoning Adjustment to reevaluate the privilege.
And that would be in a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions?
How, how did you come up with three years instead of, let's say, like five years?
Planning staff thought three years was enough, not too lengthy. A lot can take place within five years and a lot can take place within six months. Usually residents are pretty good about notifying staff if they have any issues with any of these neighboring businesses. Within most of our neighborhood business districts, they all but residential districts or some other similar district. So if there are typically any issues with neighbors, they're very swift about coming in and reporting those matters.
Who makes up the board?
It is an appointed board. They meet on the third Tuesday of each month. The Board of Zoning Adjustment, they only handle our variance and special exception cases versus the other zoning matters that go forth to Planning Commission.
Ms. Nichols, you mentioned that this was being changed because of hardships for business owners. Is that correct?
For the special exception, it's merely a privilege. With the variance, they have to prove that they have some type of hardship. So this is not a variance. It's just merely a special permit that is allowed if approved by the board.
But why is it being changed?
It's just being changed to give a little bit more time limit. Some people felt like a year was just too constant. They're having to come back in, send out notifications and they're not having any issues. There have been very few issues within the Neighborhood C1 and C2 districts, but of those, most of those issues have been addressed immediately.
So it's a matter of cost for those businesses?
Yes.
The cost of, the notifications that need to be sent out on an annual basis and the time?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A5 is a public hearing, a public hearing on ordinance number 17-587, rezoning 62 acres of property lying on the north side of Cherry Tree Road and on the west side of Joe Crossroad from Residence 1B District to Residence 2 District. This was set at the August 10, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This rezoning request is approximately 62 acres. This property was originally annexed and zoned back in 2006. This property is currently zoned Residence 1B. The property owner would like to petition that this property be rezoned from Residence 1B to Residence 2 District, which is consistent with the southern portions of this proposed subdivision.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Is there anyone here who wishes to comment? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Keith, motion by Mr. Keith, second by Mr. Culver. Thank you. Discussion.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Ms. Nichols, is there any indication as to the plans for that piece of property?
This property will be a part of the proposed Wilson Cove subdivision. There was a layout turned in for this particular property several years ago. Since then, some of the ownerships have changed as well as the product that this particular property owner would like to develop. So at this time, they are redeveloping property as well as they have recently annexed in property that we recently saw at the last meeting. And they will make plans to turn in a new subdivision layout. It should be single-family detached homes.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other questions with regard to this item? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6A6, now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-589, zoning 5.47 acres of newly annexed property lying on the east side of US Highway 231 South and on the south side of Bob Wallace Avenue. This was set the August 10, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This property is approximately 5.47 acres. This is newly annexed property. This property is located at the intersection of Bob Wallace and South Parkway. This property was recently annexed within the last two months. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Highway Business C4 District. Planning staff is no longer utilizing the light industry or heavy industry district, which both completely surround this property. So C4 would be the next best-fitting zoning designation for the proposed commercial development that will be constructed on this property.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Anyone wishing to comment? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Kling, second by the chair. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our public hearings. We have one public hearing to be set. 6B1 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning 171.41 acres of property lying east and south of Liberty Hill Road and on the east side of Opportunity Boulevard from Residence 1 District, which is 61.18 acres, and Industrial Park District, 110.23 acres, to planned industrial district to be set for the November 2, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to set the hearing.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by the chair. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and the public hearing is set for November 2. That concludes all of our public hearing business. We will now turn to communications from the public. We have five people who have signed up to speak at the meeting. When I call your name, please come to the microphone. You will have three minutes to make your comments. We will begin with Mr. Thomas Piff. Subject is Big Spring Park. Mr. Piff.
Thomas Piff, 11314 Delcrest Drive, Huntsville, Alabama 35803. I'm going to be talking about the Urban Design Associates, June 2017 Huntsville Downtown Developing Strategy Update. And my takeaway message to you tonight is to please, 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 let's take our time on this one. This is just an update. To put it succinctly, I'm not sure how much insight a $150,000 study by an out-of-town design firm can buy the city of Huntsville to make decisions with for the next 100 years. Nevertheless, I have reviewed some of the slides in depth, slides 2 through 12. Slide 2, Building Consensus and Making Recommendations. I understand the planning department had one day to look this stuff over. There is no consensus yet and I will prove that there is no consensus in due time. I'm quite certain that the study did not reach out beyond the echo chambers and into the desires of thousands of Huntsvillians. Slide 3, What We Heard, Add Unique Destinations. Exactly what is unique about recreating Bridge Street or any other ephemeral shopping venue smack dab in the middle of Big Spring Park? Our Central Park. Remember, every great city has its legacy Central Park, created and expanded with great love and effort over time. Expanded. What We Heard, Building on Historic Character and Place, that's slide 3. It does not say build on top of historic place, which is what we're doing. Slide 4, Recommended Downtown Opportunities for the Next Five Years, not the Next Three Months. Yes, it lists Fountain Circle among the ideas. However, some of the ideas are less contentious and serve much better as proof of concept for what you're trying to accomplish for our beloved city. Slide 6, Priority Investments. Of the six items, your consultant did not list rushing to privatize our Central Hall land. Slide 9, Connecting Parks and Open Spaces. Connecting Parks and Open Spaces. Nothing could be wiser and more cost-effective than to expand Big Spring Park onto itself, period. Slide 10, Create Connected Parking Resources. Why should we get involved in and even allow creating exclusive private parking resources within the inner core of our city? And then imagine busing people to our public parking resources forever after that, per slide 11. Slide 12, Proposed Development Opportunities. Fountain Circle is on the list and the list is proposed. That's all. Proposed. The Holmes Avenue North opportunity makes more sense to pursue first while we see whether organic growth proves out the viability and sustainability of Twickenham Square, the eventual city sentry, and the pre-existing businesses surrounding the Courthouse Square and beyond. If this immense cluster of overbuilding fails, the citizens of Huntsville will surely be left holding the bag, whereas our ambitious developers will have to buy their time before ringing the registers to the fullest. I'm sure my three minutes are up.
Sir, your three minutes are up.
I know. I'll pick up where I left off next time to discuss the developers that you've, that... I know. I'll pick up where I left off next time to discuss the developers that you've, that, uh, that we're talking about.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, I also have a copy of this for each of you, and I want to give it to Eileen to make her job easier. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piff. The next person to sign up is Jeff Statham. Subject is the COLA.
My name is Jeff Statham. I'm the president of the Huntsville Firefighters Association, twenty-six oh six Artie Street.
Welcome, Mr. Statham.
Thank you. As president of the Firefighter Association, I represent the firefighters of this city, but tonight I stand to speak for all city employees. I was hired in nineteen ninety-one. This is the twenty-sixth city budget that I've seen. I've watched them through the lean years and also through the prosperous ones. This year is not a lean year. I'm asking you to consider a substantial cost of living increase to help offset the one percent average COLA raise that for the, we've had for the last few years. According to Mayor Battle, almost seventy percent of the city employees are eligible for step raises. Step raises fall within our pay plan structure and do nothing to offset the inflation of the plan as a whole. Even so, over thirty percent of city employees are not eligible for a step raise. There are additional three hundred and seventy-three city employees that will receive a step but no step raise. Moving from step ten to eleven, step twelve to thirteen, step fourteen to fifteen, has no increase in pay. Altogether, we have over eleven hundred of twenty-four hundred total city employees that will rely totally on a COLA this year for any pay increase. I've heard some of you suggest that if no employees are quitting, then they must be okay with their pay. For our city to use this minimum standard for an employee satisfaction scale is disappointing. I've never met an employee in this city that performed their job at the minimum level not to be fired. Most employees rise through every challenge placed before them. As always, I would hope that an increase in the COLA would not be connected to an unnecessary or unplanned increase in our insurance rates. Today, we truly do more with less than ever. And I challenge you tonight to recognize that, not only with kind words, but with a substantial COLA that we all need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Statham. The next person to sign up is Jerry Burnett. Subject is habit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jerry Burnett, and I live at twenty-four oh five Green Hill Drive.
Welcome.
And recently, I've been having problems with, uh, neighborhoods' dogs. What happened, the city of Huntsville put a lot of, well, the city of Huntsville allowed a number of habitat homes to be built in, in one area right there, right behind my household. I guess because I've always advocated for fair housing. But what I've got now is, uh, I can understand the reason why so many people object to habitat homes being put in the neighborhood. For some reason, it looked like those individuals over on Garden Park have come with a different attitude. Whoever's living in the twenty-four oh four Garden Park, they're breeding dogs in the backyard. And they, I don't know if anyone in, on that pound would care to have a, a dog breeding farm in their backyard where dogs are barking, making up all kind of noise. And I can't get adjusted to dog barking and making up noise. I can get adjusted to kids playing in the backyard. I expect that, and I welcome that. Kids playing in the backyard, but dogs barking and yapping all night during the day. I've called the city pound a number of times, and I don't know if it's, uh, if they're able to do anything, but anyway, I want to bring that to your attention. I also want to thank, uh, Reverend Frank Boras for recognizing and acknowledging that divisiveness is on the rise. And it looked like none other than our president, Donald Trump, is the main perpetrator of divisiveness. And on last Friday night, when he came here to Huntsville and made his appearance at the city, at the, uh, Civic Center, I'm surprised that he said what he said, and no one being elected to represent the people of Huntsville had anything to say, well, anything to object to what was said. But he came here acting like a common hooligan, and no one, you should all be ashamed. We, this is Huntsville, Alabama, the place where I was born, and, and other than the time being in the military and abroad, this is where I've always lived, and I've always been proud of it. But for the last week, all you could hear in the news, national news, was Huntsville this, Huntsville that, and President Trump referring to the football players as, as so you know what's. Uh, disregarding the respect for the football player and the football player's mother. And if I said what he said up there at that city, up, up, up there at that Civic Center, uh, Huntsville PD would be dragging me to, to jail. But I can't understand why no one from this, did, none of our elected officials, to my knowledge, has said anything to condemn the visit that President Donald Trump made here and the, and the remarks that he made.
Mr. Burnett, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. You had some questions regarding dogs, uh, barking dogs, or perhaps a dog breeding operation going on. We have some folks here from the city that could certainly meet with you. Um, if you'll just step back there, they're all lined up, and we'll ask them to, the appropriate folks to meet with you. I think I saw Karen Shepherd here, and, um, Mr. McGuffey, would that be your department also? So if you'll just step right back there, uh, Mr. Guffey, Mr. McGuffey and Ms. Shepherd could, Dr. Shepherd could meet with you, yes. You'll just, right there. Thank you, sir. Uh, the next person to sign up is Ms. Dee Johnson. Ms. Johnson, please come to the microphone, yes. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, um, my name is Donna Johnson, AKA Ms. Dee. Uh, my address is twenty-eight oh five B Poplar Avenue Northwest, um, three five eight one six.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Uh, I would just like to say that, um, I'm glad to be here. I, I, I used to be in attendance quite, quite a bit, but certain things happen, and I haven't been here in a while, but I have been here for the same reason that I'm here tonight. Um, we had another horrific accident in the Northwoods community. I am the president of the Northwoods community, and I've been representing the Northwoods community for the past seven, eight years. And, uh, we have asked for a traffic light at UConn and University. Uh, the car accident was a three-car crash. Um, it turned a car over. The young lady was injured very bad. I don't know the end results of her injuries, but there has been another accident on this week as well. There, coming, for people coming from the Family Dollar store. Um, since the, these different accidents are happening, uh, that goes to show you that there is a need for a traffic light there at UConn and University to, um, you know, expedite the traffic. Um, the light is needed very much so to slow the traffic down as well and to get the, uh, people in and out of the community safely. So once again, I stand before the council board to request, I've already been informed that it's gonna happen, but I want to know when, uh, that it's gonna happen, because, um, we want to continue to try to save lives in that area. And right now, the way it's happening, it's very hard to get in and out of that community and for people to try to cross that busy highway, get into that Dollar Store, wherever they would like to go. So that's what I have tonight.
Ms. Johnson, thank you. You are obviously a great advocate for your neighborhood, and I think that we have Mr. Sanders, our Director of Traffic Engineering, here to, or, or, Mr. Davis.
Council members, yes, we're, we're working without us. They're currently getting ready to resurface University Drive from Memorial Parkway to, uh, Research Park Boulevard, and part of that's an access management plan. And we're working with them with, uh, pedestrian crossings in that area. As part of that project, it's scheduled to probably start, uh, first part of twenty eighteen.
So timeline is January twenty eighteen. It sounds like there are going to be a number of changes coming to that, that area, largely, I'm sure, due to your efforts. Thank you. Um, next signed up, uh, and last person signed up, uh, Mr. Jerry Cox. Uh, subject is city bus service.
Thank you, Madam President. Jerry Cox, forty twenty-nine Telstar Circle. The matter I came to talk to the council tonight is for the expansion of the city's shuttle bus service to Saturdays. First, I want to thank Mr. Brown and Mr. Altrey of the Transportation Department for meeting with me last week on this matter. Why do we need the shuttle bus transportation expanded to Saturdays? First of all, just to provide reasonable cost transportation for workers that work in the hotels and the, and the, uh, restaurants throughout this city, the low-wage workers who need to have transportation costs at a minimum. We need this transportation, transportation on Saturdays for, so that more residents have access to quality-of-life places and events. The city is always building or providing quality-of-life events throughout the city on the weekends. But, uh, so many of our citizens are unable to attend these Q of, uh, Q of Ls because of the lack of public transportation. Over on, uh, uh, eight oh five, the facility over on, uh, that eight, uh, eight, called eight oh five, always having a lot of events on Saturdays, but too many of our residents are unable to attend. We have these quality-of-life things in the budget for all citizens that must, uh, we need to have quality-of-life things in the budget, but all citizens that must ride or choose to ride the bus don't have access. One of the big problems is wheelchair-bound residents. As, as most of my understanding, there's, of all the taxi services in the city, there's only one taxi that can accommodate a wheelchair, yet all of our buses do that and do that most regularly. So those people, a lot of veterans who are bound in wheelchairs, cannot take advantage of these quality-of-life events. This cost can be shared by the riders, the federal government, the state government, and the city. At any hour on a weekday, there are twelve buses on the road. My assessment is that adequate service on Saturdays can be accomplished with reduced buses. All modes of transportation use reduced access on the weekends, whether it's bus, train, or plane. The time has come, actually has passed, to provide access to the same Q of L to all of our citizens. All colleges and universities would be served, and the students at those colleges and universities would have access to transportation on Saturdays.
Mr. Cox, thank you very much for your comments. Uh, council members, can we give one more minute?
Okay, there, my understanding that planning is, has a study in, uh, that they're going to be conducting on transportation, but we don't, I don't think we need a fifty thousand dollar study to determine that we need bus service on Saturdays. I thank the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cox. That concludes our comments from the public. We will move to item eight Huntsville utility items. We have seventeen Huntsville utility items to consider. This is, um, budget time for Huntsville utilities as well as for the city, so we have seventeen budget items for consideration. Um, Mr. Gertis, I understand these are routine renewals, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. What you see before you is our planned capital projects and purchases for fiscal year twenty eighteen. Um, mostly routine items. I would like to point out, there is one rather large item on there, and that will be the remainder of our fiber optic network build-out, uh, and that is roughly thirty-two point seven million dollars. Other than that, what you see here are pretty regular items.
Thank you. To, uh, facilitate the process here, I would suggest perhaps that they're grouped as water items, gas items, electric items. Um, perhaps we consider each group together as a, as a block? Would that be acceptable to you? All right, we'll begin with the water items. Item eight A is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of a trans, of transportation items for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO one seventy-three dash twenty eighteen. Uh, eight B is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of materials and labor for new construction projects for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO one fifty-one dash twenty eighteen. Uh, eight C is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of materials and labor for renewal and replacement projects for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO one fifty-two twenty eighteen. And eight D is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of metering equipment for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO one seventy-six dash twenty eighteen. Again, these are all water items.
Madam President, I move for solidary approval of eight A through eight D.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Um, questions or, or comment, discussion for Mr. Um, Joe, for Mr. Gertis on any of these items? Uh, hearing none. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Those items are approved. We will move on to gas department items. Eight E is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of materials and labor for new construction projects for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO two fifty-one dash twenty eighteen. Eight F is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of materials and labor for renewal and replacement projects for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO two fifty-two dash two eighteen. Five, eight G is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of transportation items for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO two seventy-three dash twenty eighteen. Eight H is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of metering equipment for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO two seventy-six dash twenty eighteen. And eight, uh, I is a resolution authorizing the approval and, and purchase of new regulators for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO two seventy-eight dash twenty eighteen. Again, these are all gas items.
Madam President, I move for solidary approval of eight E through eight I.
Second by the chair. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, these next items are electric items, including J, which is the, the particularly large item. Eight J is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of materials for new construction projects for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO three fifty-one dash twenty eighteen. Eight K is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of materials and labor for renewal and replacement projects for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO three fifty-two twenty eighteen. Eight L is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of tools and work equipment for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO three seventy-two twenty eighteen. Eight M is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of transportation items for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO three seventy-three twenty eighteen. Eight N is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of computer equipment for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO three seventy-five twenty eighteen. Eight O is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of metering equipment for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO three seventy-six twenty eighteen. Eight P is a resolution authorizing the approval and purchase of transformers for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO three seventy-seven twenty eighteen. Eight Q is a resolution authorizing the approval for expenses related to operating and maintaining the computer systems for fiscal year twenty eighteen, BWO IT twenty eighteen. Again, these are all electric items.
Madam President, if, if, if anyone wants to hold an item out, please let me know, otherwise I'll-
Does anyone want to, uh, to hold an item out for a separate consideration?
Hearing none. I'll move for solidary approval of eight J through eight Q.
Second by the chair. Um, any comments in general regarding the electric items or questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Gertis, you have yourself a budget. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will now move on to item nine, board appointments. Nine A, board appointments to be voted on. Nine A one is a resolution appointing Stephen A. Johnson to the Museum Board of the City of Huntsville for a term to expire August thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, nominated at the seven, uh, September fourteenth, twenty seventeen, regular council meeting.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second. Is there any, uh, any comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nine A two is a resolution author, reappointing Jane Tippett to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October one, twenty twenty, nominated September fourteenth, twenty seventeen, at the regular council meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Russell. Uh, any comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine A three is a resolution reappointing Donna Parker to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October one, twenty twenty, nominated September fourteenth, twenty seventeen, at the regular council meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Any comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine A four is a resolution reappointing Robert "Bob" Boden Distel to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October one, twenty twenty, nominated September fourteenth, twenty seventeen, at the regular council meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. King, second by, Kling, second by Mr. Russell. Uh, any comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine A five is a resolution reappointing Shannon Windsor to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October one, twenty twenty, nominated September fourteenth, twenty seventeen, at the regular council meeting. Motion by the chair.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Any comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our board appointments. We have one board appointment nomination. Nine V one is the nomination to reappoint Philip W. Bentley the Third to the Huntsville Madison County Airport Authority for a term to expire October twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. Are there any other nominations to be brought to council? That concludes, um, our nomin, our nominations. Item ten, approval of expenditures. Um, uh, ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment- 10A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling.
Thank you, Madam President. Move for payment vouchers amount of $16,277,117.23.
Second by the Chair. Is there any discussion, any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a Finance Committee report, Mr. Kling?
No, Madam President. Thank you.
Move on, then, to Communications from the Mayor. Mayor Battle, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. For the record, I'd like to announce the following appointments. Appointment of Frank Colazo Jr. to the Research Park Board for a partial term to expire July 22, 2019. Appointment of Dr. Robert Altenkirk to the Research Park Board for a seven-year term to expire July 22, 2024. Dr. Ryan Smith to the Human Relations Commission, Place 5, to fill a partial term to expire September 22, 2018. And there have been a lot of events over the last couple, over the last week. We've had the President visit, we've had the Vice President visit, and we've had an election, so all that is now behind us as we move forward. Toyota Manufacturing yesterday announced $106 million investment in their community. And one of the things I pointed out with Toyota was they are great community partners. Year in, year out, they give back to this community. When we went through the recession of 2008, 2009, no one was laid off by Toyota. They made sure that their team members worked, and they've been great partners in helping to sponsor many, many community-wide events, things that make for great quality of life for us. We had our first cross-country event at John Hunt Park. The Sports Commission hosted it, and it drew over 1,200 runners. And if you haven't been down to see the new Flint River canoeing access that has been put in, a great parking lot, and a great place to drop in and be able to paddle around the Flint River. I think they have 40 miles of river that you can paddle up and down, so it ought to be a great, great time. As usual, we still have lots of cats and dogs, cats and kittens, to be adopted from Huntsville Animal Services, and there will be free adoption September 20 through the 30th. And the adoption includes a cat or a kitten that has been spayed, neutered, and has vaccination and a microchip for pet identification. And then on September 30, 9 to 4, the Second Annual Great Outdoor Expo at Ditto Landing will be happening. And there are free hikes, there's a healthy Huntsville Walk, and there's a National Night Out, but my voice is about to go on you, so I'll leave it at that, but say, have a great week, and you can find all these on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. That brings us then to Communications from the Council. We will begin with Councilman Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. What I'd like to say first, I had a really successful Homeowners Association startup meeting with Mount Sharon. This is something I really wanted to do in the first year, year and a half, is start a base of communication and start up as many homeowners associations that I can, as best I can, or even neighborhood associations. This makes number three for me. They were really involved, they responded in email. Very thankful for everybody who came out from Mount Sharon. Secondly, it's homecoming for Alabama A&amp;M. Excited for a wonderful weekend. I promise I'll get in the house soon. Won't be out all night, but we're excited about the parade. As many of you know, Alabama A&amp;M has a very historic history, and they really do a good job on homecoming weekend. Lot of people from out of town. It's a really great economic driver for the city of Huntsville. Excited to see a great game, and we hope that you all support the Bulldogs in that way. And finally, I'm excited for this weekend, just to take a trip down that was a conversation early on in my tenure now, and it is coming to fruition, I think, thank you to the support of the administration. But a number of us, we're going down to Mobile to be looking at the CCTV and sort of the police aspect of their community policing and what they do down there. And though it's not significant, it doesn't sound like a fun trip, it is like a dream trip for me, because we get to focus on something I think will have a potential big impact in the city of Huntsville, and learning with people who are much smarter than me is what I love to do. So again, I thank the administration, as well as my colleagues who supported this trip. Excited to get down there and learn on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Keith. Councilman Russell.
I'll waive my time.
Councilman Kling.
I'm gonna waive my time, too. Thank you.
Councilman Culver.
I guess I'll be the oddball. Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick note, we do have a town hall meeting scheduled for Monday, October 16, at 6:00 PM at Hope Church located on Balch Road, and I think we have confirmation from Planning and Fire Department, Police Department, Engineering. We're discussing a possible senior citizen community in that particular neighborhood. So if you can come out, if you live in proximity, we have sent out cars to residents who live in proximity, and this is just our way of keeping the community informed as it relates to what we're doing. So if you can, come out and be in attendance at your discretion. And had a great week as well, a lot of activities, as Mayor Battle said. One event that was just dear to my heart, in addition to the Toyota plant with this great expansion and all of the other activities. Calhoun Community College had a wellness day, and a lot of vendors were there. We certainly thank you for coming out. We're hoping to be there for the next 10 years plus. So the 100 black men were sponsors of that events that, who were assisted by other organizations like the AKAs and the Deltas, and of course, the Sigmas and other sororities and fraternities. So we'll keep that up. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Culver, and I will make my comments very quick. I received a request from Joy Parker, who is Chairman of the Beautification Board. We've just appointed a whole bunch of beautification board folks, and one of the things that they get involved with is the Wreaths for Veterans Project, which is a nationwide project placing wreaths on the graves of those who have served our country. And she said they have 3,000 wreaths that need to have bows placed on them and be refurbished. They are desperate for volunteers. If you are interested in helping with this very worthy project, Monday, October 2, and Tuesday, October 3, they will be at the Veterans Museum on Airport Road, starting at 9:30, putting those wreaths together, and we would certainly encourage anyone who's going to be available on Monday or Tuesday at 9:30 in the morning to help with those wreaths, and I'm sure they will then need help placing them on the graves, and then I know the next piece is that they have to take them all down. So there's lots of opportunities to become involved in that very, the Wreaths for Veterans project. Also, please put on your calendars, October 28, the Green Team and the Southeast YMCA will be gathering at Ditto Landing for their cleanup project. So we've got some scouts here. It's a good project for you all, for church groups and families. October 28, starting at 8 o'clock in the morning, gather at Ditto to help with some projects. It's always a very fun time. That concludes comments from the Council. We will now move on to item 13, Unfinished Business Items for Action. 13A is ordinance number 17-699, annexing 20.4 acres of land lying on the east side of Old Railroad Bed and south of Capshaw Road. This was introduced at the September 14, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by the Chair, Ms. Nichols.
This annexation request is approximately 20.4 acres. This property will join the neighboring Heritage Brook subdivision to the north and will also tie in to the Maple Ridge subdivision to the east. There has been a recent submittal for the Maple Ridge subdivision, as well as there will be future extensions to the Heritage Brook subdivision, and the property owner would like to request annexation for city services as well as access to city schools.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. So as it relates to this annexation, you all kind of know where I stand on that. These particular areas are entitled to the same services that people in the central city get, so... And I understand, in all cases, it's not practical because of the water restrictions in that area. Some of it is limestone county water or Monrovia water, but my point is, for these, for this new construction, would new residents take ownership, knowing, being aware of those things as it relates to utilities, water, and all of the other services that we provide and don't provide?
Whomever is the developer, their realtor, or whatever staff they're using should be the responsible party for relaying that information. This property is on the Madison County side of Old Railroad Bed, so they wouldn't have some of the limestone issues as far as what providers they need to pay certain things to. Electricity should be Huntsville Utilities. Their water is in the Harvest-Monrovia District. They have the authority over this particular area, and the developer is aware of that, and he has signed and submitted a statement of services to Planning Staff. Also, he's aware if the homes are more than five miles from the nearest fire station that they could have a slight increase in homeowner's insurance. So the developer is well aware of those and should relay that information along to the parties that may purchase these homes in the future.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13B is ordinance number 17-704, amending ordinance number 89-79, Classification and Salary Plan Ordinance, as was introduced at September 14, 2017, regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by the Chair. Is there any... Mr. Thomas.
Yes, Council. This is an ordinance to amend the salary and classification plan for a position in ITS as a new position. We just need to retitle it.
Very good. Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we get to the good stuff. 13C is an ordinance number 17-700, adopting the City of Huntsville annual budget for fiscal year 2018, beginning October 1, 2017. This was introduced at the September 14, 2017, regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Ms. Sargent.
And if I could kick off comments on this, this is our, item C, D, E, F, G, H are all items that I believe are part of our budget ordinance that we will be asking you to pass for, starting October 1, 2017 year through September 31, 2018. This budget adds 10 police officers, $12 million, has $12 million in paving. Normally, we are $5 to $6 million in paving. Adds to communications, adds to roads, the last year of our $25 million Restore Roads project, and $12 million worth of collector roads when we start looking at Greenbrier, Sanderson, McCrery, and Weatherly. It also adds a public safety facility and has a COLA of 1% in it. You know, one of the hardest things that you talk to employees about, and even retirees, is what's a person worth? And what's the value of their work? And what's the value of what they do? It is very hard. We, on one hand, have a responsibility to take care of our employees. We, on the other hand, have a responsibility to wisely spend the taxpayers' dollars. I mean, that's our job. It's not an easy job, but it's a job, and it always comes down to weighing out where you think you can help the most. This year, you know, we have a 1% COLA. 70% of our employees will have a step raise, which is about a 3%. We have longevity pay, which costs us about $1.8 million, which will have a single payment in December. We have a retirement system that costs us, on any given payroll, about 19%. The city bears 13% of it, and the employees bear 6% of it. We have health insurance here, a very rich health insurance plan, of which the city bears 85%, and the employee bears 15%. And out of our retirement system, we have a retirement system that, you know, second to none, really. Many, many people would love to have this, and in private industry can't afford it because it has a set rate on it. Because it has a set rate on it, we have more liabilities than we have assets in it, but we have a possibility of coming back if returns come back on the money that we are putting into it. So to council, we say, you know, it's very tough valuing what a person's work is worth. But I think we have come down to the fine line of how much it's worth, how much we are paying, do we have a fair wage? Do we have a fair amount that we pay? And secondly, are we taking care of the taxpayers' dollars? And are we being responsible with that taxpayers' dollars? On the retiree one-time payment, this is something that happens every four years. The legislature gives municipalities, counties, and other organizations the power to do a one-time payout to retirees. It just happens to always be on election year. But when they do that, they do that without funding it. They tell you, you can go in and you can do it, and this year, it's about an $850,000 delta. We chose to make sure that we held on to the insurance that the retirees had and to make sure that we kept the insurance at a rate that was affordable. And if we changed that insurance, it would go up about three times what the normal employees are paying, and would be very hard to afford. So we've looked at all the issues in this, and I think we've got a budget that is a fair budget, not something everybody will like. We will never find something that everybody likes, but this is a very fair budget, and it's a fair one that provides the money for doing what we need to do as the City of Huntsville, but also is responsible to the taxpayers, who actually pay that sales tax and pay that privilege license and pay that property tax that gives us ability to run a city on. So thank you, Madam President, and I'll turn over to Ms. Sargent.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Ms. Sargent.
Thank you, Madam President. The slides you'll see this evening are a summation of the ones we presented at the work session, so they'll be very familiar to you. First, related to the general fund, as we said both at our presentation on the 14th and at the work session, our goal is to manage the long-range operating budgets and position the city to continue within those means. We are funding the step increases for the employees at approximately $668,000, the 1% COLA at approximately $1.1 million, and the longevity payout at approximately $1.8 million. We will be maintaining the required general fund contingency reserve at the required 11.5%. We are still projecting to hopefully maintain health insurance unchanged for PPO and a minimal increase to the active city employees for PNC. And we have personnel growth in the Police Department of 12, with 10 sworn officers, Municipal Court at 4, Landscape Management at 6, for the park maintenance with the expansion of our green spaces, and then WPC. The general fund's revenues and expenditures are both at $197.6 million, with the breakdown with personnel being your largest at 74% or $145.5 million. Operations, $34 million, 17%. Appropriations, $17 million, almost 9%, and then operating capital of $1 million, and that's less than 1%. Looking at that in another way, your revenues, your $197 million revenue, your largest portion comes from sales and use tax at 53%. Then your next largest portion is other taxes at 14%. 13% comes from licenses and permits. Property tax makes up just under 10%, and then various other small items, including charges for sanitation pickup and pilots. And then your expenditures, again, you can see personnel is that largest piece, it's Then our capital plans, your 1990 capital plan, we have a carryforward balance on projects currently in works of $13 million. Then we have revenues, recurring revenues, which are your taxes, of just under $32 million. We have a debt issuance, as was discussed at the work session, of $74 million, for a total of just under $106 million of revenue. And then your expenditures of capital projects, $98 million. We have debt service that already exists of $12 million, and then transfers of $2 million. Within that, we're going to have 38% going to parks and recreational facilities at $37 million. at thirty-seven million, municipal facilities for twenty-nine, twenty-nine percent and twenty-eight million. Infrastructure projects and maintenance, twenty-one percent, just twenty million. Fleet and equipment programs, six percent, five and a half million. Community projects, five percent or five million, and then economic development, one percent and one point three million. Then in the two thousand fourteen capital plan, we have a carry-forward balance also of eight million, annual revenues there of forty-one million, and then a debt issuance also of fifteen million totaling sixty-four point three. Your expenditures there are fifty-nine and a half million with debt service of three point eight. And then additional debt service for that new fifteen million of just over six hundred thousand with making total expenditures of sixty-three point nine million. This one ha- the two thousand fourteen capital improvement plan has its focus on roadways, total funding of thirty-nine point seven million, which, as you can see, is a record. We will make the last payment on the Restore Our Roads program of twenty-five million dollars. There will be additional funding for Weatherly Road of two and a half million, Memorial Parkway, I five sixty-five interchange at forty-one million, street resurfacing of twelve million, which is broken down between residential streets at eight million and collectors at four million, and then an additional one million funding going to the S T P twenty And to see that same breakdown slightly different, you can see that your road improvements make up sixty-five percent of the two thousand fourteen capital improvement plan. Then eleven percent is your debt service, ten percent is economic development.
We can go back to any point. Thank you, Ms. Sergeant. I'm sure we have questions.
Absolutely.
Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, first of all, Mayor, I certainly commend you and your staff, Ms. Sergeant and her crews for putting together what is seemingly an impeccable budget, but I would say, uh, a question before I start commenting on something else. Um, I noticed in your appropriations that it was at seventeen percent, which, uh, will go back, uh, yeah, seventeen million, I'm sorry, go back, yeah, seventeen million, which is eight point six percent. So, I'm, I'm assuming that you've put the schools appropriations under a different category, is that right?
Yes. Their, their money, the schools appropriation is an automatic split when sales and use tax comes in and goes into a segregated fund.
Okay, that's what, that's what's different about that. Thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Uh, so, since we've had our work session on the budget, of course, I'm sure counsel received the email that our administrative assistant sent regarding a lot of inquiries about the COLA, um, and, uh, also subsequent inquiries about the retirees, and I know Councilman Kling is gonna talk about that, but as it relates to the COLA, um, and we want to be good stewardess of taxpayers' dollars, um, however, one percent, over the last ten years, I believe, what we have given to City of Huntsville employees has been a little less than what social securities increases have been. Uh, I think we've given about eight point five, five percent, something like that, Mayor, which is not bad, I'm not criticizing, but I'm, I'm just curious and wondering, and maybe I should ask you, Ms. Sergeant, uh, can we find a half penny to give to our employees, which would be a one percent COLA mid-year? Is that remotely possible? And, and let me say this, we're not trying to tie it into the budget, Mayor, but could we just come back and revisit that? And the reason I say that half a cent is because the general fund is nearly two million, so it costs us one point one million for every one percent increase. So that would be about a half a penny of two hundred million, if that makes sense. Are you following me on that?
Mm-mm.
So, one percent of a hundred million is one million. So, since we have a two hundred million dollar budget, then a one point one million dollar increase for a COLA would be about a little less or a little bit more than a half of a percent, half of one cents. Does that?
A half a percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that?
I, I think I understand what you're trying to say, but...
So, 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 if we could just revisit, we're not going to try and change it right now, but...
So, just to clarify, Mr. Culver, you're not suggesting an additional one percent COLA now, you're asking if at mid-year we can come back and do a one percent COLA?
That is correct.
And I think that as a council member, you could propose that at mid-year if you want to do that.
A- absolutely. I'm just putting it out here now for us to be thinking about it, uh, based on how revenues come in. And, and I wanna say this too, I know, Councilman, you are gonna talk about this, um, being a retiree myself, which this would never benefit me because I retired through the teacher's retirement system and this appropriations that the state made for employees is strictly for the employees under the E R S, Employees Retirement System, not the T R S, Teachers' Retirement System. So, if a raise were given, I do not benefit from this. But my point is that, being a thirty-six-year City of Huntsville employee, I run into folk who retired and a lot of these individuals who retired, some of them have pensions that are seven hundred, nine hundred, eleven hundred dollars a month. Um, and I'm often thinking about those retirees. And it's sad that the state only gives us one opportunity every four years to even address that issue or to make that appropriation. So, I wish there were to be something that we can do. You know, the last time we did a six hundred dollars, I talked to a lot of the employees who, retirees who benefited from that and they said, hey, that made a difference in their Christmas and their budget and everything. So, you know, sometimes we forget about the people who maybe need it the most and I just want us to think about that, Mayor, we can.
Thank you. Mr. Culver, other comments? Mr. Kling?
Uh, first of all, uh, I think overall it's a very good budget. Mayor, um, not trying to be polite, you're not a voter in my district, but I think it's a great voter. I think it's a great budget. Uh, I know you, I think Mr. Hamilton, others, Mr. Russell worked on the resurfacing, which is being great for the city because it's a great investment throughout the community. Uh, a couple of questions that I had asked about at the last council meeting, I'd gotten some, some responses, which were, which were favorable. Uh, I'd had contact with, with Mr. Hamilton about fire station number three, which is the one at Jordan Lane and Bob Wallace, and he did tell me that there was a plan that somewhere in the future, within the next several years, five, six years, whatever, uh, that there might be a new station that would be constructed, uh, roughly within about a quarter of a mile or very close to that neighborhood, where it would still serve that neighborhood. And I think, uh, certainly that makes sense that you don't wanna go spending a lot of money to renovate an existing fire station if there's a plan, you know, for that area. So, I think that certainly, uh, that certainly does make sense. Uh, I do, uh, another issue, I do kind of share, uh, the concerns that, uh, Mr. Cox had raised about Saturday, uh, bus service. Uh, I know Mr. Brown is looking at a, a study that would be funded, uh, with some city money and some federal money, uh, on that. I think there is merit, uh, if we break down all of the routes, and I think arguments can be made for each of the routes, uh, the southwest route, uh, one, one of the two core routes and the University Drive Route and maybe the one out toward A and M would be, uh, good things that could serve. So, uh, if at all possible, I know y'all wanna study everything and go through a process, but it would be good if we could start, uh, Saturday, uh, bus service this year. Uh, and we look at it, make sure we're being responsible. I think, uh, I think there's a lot of merit just on those four routes, uh, taking one of the two core routes, but, uh, I would hope that that would be something that we could add into the budget, uh, or, you know, have running, uh, for this, before this year's out. I think, uh, between that, that availability and, of course, letting the Communications Department really, you know, communicating, get the word out to the public, uh, I think that could be something that could really help, uh, bring people downtown and we got a lot of great events are down, going downtown and, uh, I think it could provide service for those employees who work for the service industries that do, do not have a car. So, I think, I think there's been some good thinking on that and I'd hope we can, we could bring that to fruition. Um, one other thing, and of course, uh, Ms. Kate's from the Legal Department advised me that, uh, it would not be a budget amendment, but it'd be a separate, uh, thing to bring up for consideration about the retiree COLA or, or one-time bonus payment. Uh, certainly, I wanna be careful, I don't do anything that's, that, you know, is embarrassing to the council. Uh, I did find out, and I'd already communicated with, with Mr. Riley, uh, Shot Stadium of the Huntsville Utilities Board had received approval from the Attorney General's Office that he was allowed to vote on utility, uh, employee pay raises, and of course, there was similar clearance that allowed me as a council member to vote for, uh, COLAs, uh, even though my wife was one of the, um, city employees that was impacted. Uh, but, uh, I think this has been kinda checked out and I don't wanna, you know, do anything that'd be inappropriate. If anybody does have any questions and concerns, and if this thing were to pass, uh, I talked to my wife and she would certainly be agreeable to letting the city, uh, hold whatever the amount of her, uh, bonus payment would be until everybody was completely a hundred percent sure that everything, uh, was, you know, pre-cleared or approved, uh, by whatever standards we needed. But again, uh, I think it's a great investment, uh, that Mayor Battle's made in the central area of the city. It's good to talk about growing outward, but, uh, I think we've got some great things that are going inward and, uh, when we talk about road resurfacing, of course, I think that's a great thing, but again, that's gonna be great for all five, uh, areas of the city and I think that's really gonna be a great plus, uh, for neighborhoods and I, I think that's a great, a great thing that all you guys, uh, uh, came up with. That, that's the comments I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kling, Mr. Russell.
Uh, Madam President, Ms. Sergeant, he, could you go to the nineteen ninety capital plan? What is the two million dollar transfer for and why is it there?
Councilman Russell, the, uh, that two million dollar transfer is, uh, to the general fund in order to balance the general fund. And, yeah, I think that, that's a, a very valid question, particularly given the discussion that we have about, you know, how we're progressively doing COLAs and how that ties to step increases and things. Because, uh, while clearly we have been very successful in the last number of years in growth and jobs growth and bringing industry and sales tax growth continues, what that number represents is the work that the city's done, the council and the administration together, in growing out of the recession. And if that number were zero, uh, you could argue that we have successfully grown out of the recession. The fact that that has a two million dollar number means that we have not yet grown out of the recession, but, uh, it's actually a huge step in the right direction. The, the models a few years ago projected that number to be much larger. And the reality is, the growth that we've had is, is slowly getting us back to, uh, the general fund being able to sustain itself and the capital plans being able to sustain themselves. Uh, you know, when, and you were, you were obviously on council at the time, it was prior to, prior to me coming to the city, when, uh, when the recession hit, uh, the administration and council made the decision to not lay employees off, but find other ways of balancing the budget. Uh, a big part of that was returning money from the capital plan back to the general fund in order to balance the general fund. So, while, you know, I've, I've talked to employees that, that talk about the fact that we're having a lot of success and that's true, uh, but we're still not recovered from the recession. And what's interesting, if you go back and look over the last, you know, eight, ten years, uh, despite, uh, not having recovered from the recession, we were still doing colas. Uh, and I think you could probably argue that, uh, folks in the private industry would not have the ability to do that kind of budget. So, uh, you know, there's continued to be investment in, in our workforce, we've continued to do the step increases, uh, but we still have a little ways to go. And the models right now still project continued subsidies from the capital plan back to the general fund in the, in the future years. If we're successful and continuing to grow, I mean, the strategy we have in place, uh, you know, we could drive that number down to zero, hopefully, and that's certainly the goal. Uh, but, but trying to be, uh, fiscally responsible in laying out those models and projecting what we're capable of doing, uh, at this point, we anticipate those continue into the future. But that, that represents not being fully recovered from the recession yet.
Okay, and that basically was my follow-up question. So, the models predict that we'll, could, the city will continue to have to reach into the capital budget to balance the operating budget?
It, it does, but, but as I say, I wanna reiterate that, uh, at, at smaller amounts than what was projected just a few years ago. So, uh, we've slowed the growth of that subsidy, uh, but have not eliminated it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Russell, I might also point out, the two debts that we have left from the two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven recession is that two million dollars, which is right now, each year coming out of the, uh, budget, which was, was a much larger number, as, as Mr. Hamilton pointed. But it's also the hundred and ninety-two million dollars that, uh, we, uh, are at a liability for in our retirement system. Uh, the retirement systems of Alabama has a retirement system that we pay nineteen percent of our payroll every year or two. Uh, they were not getting the returns that they were expected in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. And at this time, we have a net pension liability, which shows up in your CAFR and your, uh, uh, your total budget, uh, that is, that we use every year of a hundred and ninety-two million seven hundred and eight thousand dollars. And so, we are slowly but surely, uh, trying to work our way out of that too. Last year, I think you remember, we put eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards, uh, towards that fund. And that's not much towards one nine, one hundred and ninety-two million, but it also shows that we are being a little bit responsible and making sure that we, um, get back to the place where we need to be and get, get where our liabilities equal our, our, um, uh, our, our assets when we start talking about our, uh, our net pension liabilities. We are funded at about sixty-four percent right now in our, um, uh, as far as assets versus liabilities in our, in our retirement systems. One of the things I think is very important for us is to be conservative on this, to make sure that we're conservative enough so that we, we can meet our obligations and meet the obligations of the promises that we've made to our employees.
Mr. Keith, comment?
Thank you, Madam President. And, um, Ms. Sergeant, if you could, these, this COLA does not affect the salary of myself, my colleagues, and the mayor, correct?
I don't have that file with me to know. There's a very small selection of people that don't get the COLA.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm asking it, but I know the answer, we, we, we don't. And so, I guess the best way to pass one is to find a way to get attached, but...
So, make a statement and...
Yeah, that's right. I'm saying it to say, um, I absolutely agree with the rest of my colleagues, there's a, we absolutely wanna pay, uh, that's, that's in us all to try and show our appreciation for everything that the city hall does, but I, I think the mayor's put together a pretty substantial but effective and efficient budget and accounts for my district in a very, very good way, especially the capital budget, um, accounts for some of the projects that we need to get started, that we have gotten started and that we need to see through the finish line. Um, I do think there needs to be something said, though I do have a small amendment at D, um, uh, about salary and, and pay. I think there's an opportunity for maybe for some small restructuring when it comes to these step raises that don't have any money attached to them, um, as well as where we start certain, um, uh, public safety is an example, where we start them off competitive in the mar- market. And I, I do think there needs to be a conversation going forward into the next budgets around incentives, uh, the things that we can offer that maybe other cities cannot, um, and that incentives package can be different in a number of ways, whether it's learning Spanish as a second language, being paid for, or giving, uh, money towards college credits. But there is a way to incentivize buy-in for our employees that is beyond a COLA, and I think that the next time we come to this situation, whether that be half-year by Councilman Culver or into the next budget, we need to consider those things. Um, again, I, I will say though, that I am very happy with the investments we're making in the road work as well as the capitals and, and investments. And, uh, though the amendment will come at D, I, I think that this bodes well for the City of Huntsville.
Um, I do have a question, Mayor. It can be for you or Ms. Sergeant or Mr. Hamilton. Um, with regard to this COLA, which I guess would be the proposed COLA that Mr. State had mentioned and that we've heard from some, from some others, would it basically be five and a half million dollars that would come out of this budget and from what Mr. Hamilton said, likely come out of the capital improvement plan as a transfer? So, what would that look like? How would that impact that capital improvement plan?
So, the, the, the numbers you see before you already repres- have a one percent COLA, so... So the, the numbers you see before you already have a 1% COLA, so in, in the example you gave of...
Additional four...
It'd be additional 4%, so approximately 4.4 million. And, you know, the only, only real source for those funds would be out of the 1990 capital plan. It would have to be items that are what are referred to as cash-funded, those that are, that are not debt-funded. We don't use debt to pay salaries and virtually all of the, the cash-funded projects in the 90 capital plan are really the maintenance accounts. So it's things like repaving, it's sidewalk repair, it's drainage maintenance, it's those kinds of things.
Thank you, I have a new phone which I can't figure out. I'm going to call a 14-year-old to help me out with it, I promise.
So I, you know, I think realistically, if you, if you added 4.4 million in expenses to the general fund, then, then our next step would be to find $4.4 million in the capital plan. You know, the, the, by far the, the best source for that would be repaving. Everything else is much smaller numbers, so you could nibble around the edges of that out of some of those other maintenance accounts, but the only really large maintenance account that you have in that capital plan is repaving.
And, and I guess my, my thought with that would be, I have, I've gotten a few, a few emails, maybe five, about the COLA, but I can tell you that I get emails almost every day about somebody wants the street repaved. And so it's, I, I think this is, this is a good budget because it, it meets employee needs with a 1, 1, with a 1% COLA with, by keeping health insurance costs reasonable, probably incredibly reasonable, again, providing longevity pay and, and step raises. We're meeting the needs of our employees and it also permits us to meet the needs of our citizens.
And if I could touch on one, I mean, a couple of you had, have, have made reference to the fact that we also do step increases and oftentimes, typically at this time of year during the budget, you know, at least in the time that I've been here, all the discussion's been about the COLA and we tend to fail to highlight the fact that step increases are occurring. So just, just to run an example based on a question that I was asked, I, I took a, a particular grade out of our, out of our pay chart and if an employee at that grade had started in 2010 with the city, in 2017, between their step increases and the COLAs, they would have gotten over a 51% raise for still doing the exact same job, same scope, same responsibilities they started out at seven years ago. You won't find anywhere in the private sector where employees are getting 51% raises in a seven-year period for doing the exact same job. It just doesn't happen. We have great employees that do a great job. We've got a, a pay chart that, that gives them a progression. As several of you know, I've, I've talked to you about some things that we're doing to look at, is, is it structured the right way and is there actually a restructuring of that chart that would better incentivize longevity, that would better spread those, those step increases and continue them deeper into employees' careers? And I think there's a number of things that we can do and we're working on that. I, I would expect to, to bring back to council during this year, the results of, of that look and, and I think there's a way that we can do that, that really gets that, the workforce development needs from the, the reason you structure a salary plan the way you do is not just to incentivize people to take the job, but you incentivize them to grow in the job, you incentivize them to stay with you. And there's some places in our, in our structure where it may not do that as well as we'd like it to and so we're looking at that and, and I think we'll be able to come back to it with a recommendation on a way that, where that could be structured a little bit differently without a significant change in cost, but a way that better, better lays out a plan for, for our employees. And so we're, we're working that and we, and we'll bring you the results back of, of that study. But I think it's important that, that, that we not forget the fact that we have very healthy step increases through the early part of people's career. Now they absolutely, there is a, the point at which they top out and at that point, the only raises they get are the COLAs, right? Right now, we're in a cycle where that's actually a minority of, of our employees and part of the way council addressed that and sought to mitigate that was the longevity pays that, that you put in just a few years ago and that continue and, and as Ms. Sergeant briefed, this year's $1.8 million that goes to employees predominantly because it's, it's structured based on the years of service, so that those people that are topped out are getting the, the bulk of that, of that money. So there are a number of ways in which council has put in place systems to, to compensate our employees for the work that they do and I just think it's important that we not lose sight of the fact that step increases are a significant part of that. The COLAs are not intended to be the primary means by which our employees' salary grow. The step increases is intended to be that primary means. The COLA augments that and, and, you know, if, when you look at our salary, our average salaries versus private sector, we're in very, very good shape.
Councilman, if I could add one thing to Mr. Hamilton's comments, not all of you were council members when this occurred, but about five to six years ago, I remember Mark Russell challenged us with it that night, but the 1990 capital plan used to be, it's still funded with sales tax, but at that point in time, it was 23%. It was, it was about a half a cent of the four and a half cents we collect. We came to you because we were supplementing the general fund so heavy, we made a permanent, the council voted to permanently decrease that from 23% down to 18%. In addition to that, was about $5.5 million a year taken out of the capital plan every year forever. We're still supplementing it on top of that at $2 million. So anything that you would do in a general fund, Mr. Hamilton's correct, it would have to come out of the 1990 capital plan. What you would most likely have to do if it's a permanent decision like a COLA, because not only are you funding it this year, you're funding it next year and so on and so forth, you would most likely need to do an amendment to change that percentage yet again to guarantee the general fund and our AAA bond rating that we would have those resources available. Just wanted to point that out because some of you weren't here when we reduced that by 5%.
And if I could, if that's a point of reference, I didn't want to bring up, maybe you could speak to Ms. Sergeant, about that compounding cost, that it's not as simple as people might think it is to just double 1 million and make it 2 million. Can you sort of just give a brief summation of how that is to carry a 2% COLA from that point on? And again, I, I agree that we all want to give this amount of money to appreciate our employees, but can you give the, how that cost compounds?
Well, I can't give the math, but it's 2% this year, so the number that I'm giving is for this year's salaries, when we add the additional 12 officers and six WPC and four municipal court and I'm trying to remember all the numbers, that's additional people that come into your payroll, so that, that then increases your total payroll and it's not just what you've got this year. So all those people would receive a step increase or the majority of those people would receive a step increase, plus all of the 2,000-plus people that are still eligible for step increases that are already here. So everybody's salaries would go up over the next 12 months when we come into the budget again. So you have a 2% COLA on top of the steps, on top of whatever your total base salaries are for the people that are here and then you now have the COLA for next year that's being calculated on that base salary because it doesn't go away. So you may not be at 1.1 million for a 1% next year, it may be 1.5. It's based on who's here, what they're at grade step and employee totals.
Thank you, Ms. Sergeant.
Just for example, since 2012, when you add up the COLAs that were provided each of those years, it equals 8%. If you look at the actual impact of salary between then and now, it's actually 8.5%. So it's a compounding effect as you, as you point out and when you add half a percent to, so that's, you know, that's an extra $500,000 that was not directly in the COLA that, that the, the council voted on. It was part of the compounding effect of a little COLA every single year and that will only continue to grow. So you're absolutely right that the 1% you do this year is actually, you know, above 1% the following year and the year after that and the year after that because it's baked into your, into your pay chart forever.
So let me ask one other question because, you know, my, my question with regard to the COLA was to make it real, that this is, this is what it looks like in any budget, in our family budget, when, when we choose to make an expenditure, the, you're making choices, what is it you're going to be giving up and how is another part of your life going to be impacted? So let me ask that question also with regard to the retiree bonus, since it's going to be coming up later on and, and it does impact the, the budget. Mayor, you, you described it as, as unfunded by the state. This, this state is very fond of unfunded mandates. This is an unfunded, unfunded opportunity. We're not mandated to give this bonus. We have the opportunity to give this bonus if we, if we choose to do so, but it is unfunded. So how would we fund this $850,000 potentially? I think, Mayor, you mentioned that it would come from the retiree insurance fees, which we are keeping flat this year, but what would that look like for the average person? How much would their, their fees, their, their premiums increase?
I think your, your best, your, your best way to look at it is that our, our employees pay between 12 and 15% for their, their insurance, so say it runs $107 every two weeks, that if the retirees' insurance will be 40% because it will go to the maximum amount, amount that it, it is, it will actually meet the amounts that it should. So it will be, you know, 3, 350, almost $400 each every, every two weeks and, you know, that, that places some of those retirees out of the system and, and does not allow them to be in that system.
So, so just doing some quick math there, you're looking at $800 a month increase for an employee, $9,600 a year. What would, what's the average bonus going to be? Is it like $700?
It's $24 per year of service, a 25-year employee, figure about 600.
Okay.
But that's not what I was proposing or that's not what I have in proposal.
But this, this is what the mayor, the mayor has, has suggested, that, that instead of giving the bonus, we are keeping their, their healthcare costs flat. So if, in that model, if we were to give the bonus, they would get $600 to spend on Christmas, as Mr. Culver has suggested, but they're going to pay for that $600 in $9,600 a year. I'm thinking that's not probably a wise investment for our employees and while it would be very nice to give them the one-time bonus and we have been under a lot of political pressure to do so, I think it would be very short-sighted of us to do something that's going to, in the long run, really hurt our employees and they may not even understand that, our retirees. And right, retirees are living on a fixed income and we can't do anything that would increase their costs dramatically, their healthcare costs. And when you're retired, your healthcare, that's when you need healthcare and to increase their retirement costs to that level for a $600 bonus, I think is absolutely wrong.
Madam President, I agree with you. That's why I think we need to find another funding outlet, which I do have in the proposal. Do you want me to get in it now or wait until we get to that point on the agenda?
Well, I think it would be interesting to hear what that is, where, I mean, how it would impact this budget here. I mean, I, I'm not seeing money in this budget. Are you seeing money in this budget to fund that bonus, that $850,000? It looked pretty tight to me.
Well, actually, the, the numbers I got is 1,156 employees and the number, dollar amount is, was approximately 728,000, what I was told. What I was looking at as, as two, two funding sources, instead of saying, let's go ahead and do this and, you know, worry about funding it later, is to come up with two, two sources. One is the budget carryover that we're going to have to end this fiscal year. I do understand that a big chunk of that is earmarked for carryover for projects that are funded. A million-dollar project for the current fiscal year, only half of it is complete and the half of that is carried over. That's part of the budget carryover, but then there's, there have been surpluses that have come in from different times. So two sources I was thinking of for the, the money would be the current fiscal year when we do the budget closeout, that that carryover that is not encumbered for current projects would be used, the first $728,000 or whatever the number is, would, would be used for that. If, let's say it, all of a sudden, it just turns out mysteriously, every penny is blocked out and there's not anything being carried over, which I don't think that's ever happened in the past, but if that were to happen, then I would say we would look at the current fiscal year and the budget carryover for the current fiscal year. Projections that we have are conservative and I think just about every year, except for the 2006, 2007 fiscal year period, there's a little bit of surplus. So what I'm saying is the surplus that we would have carryover, I know we use that for vehicles and for other things, other good projects, but I'm just saying that this would be used for those employees who'd retire, gave their heart and soul for Huntsville because while it was pointed out that there have been some pretty good increases, step increases of the last five, six years, or if you were an employee now, what you were making of the last seven or eight years, a lot of these employees are sanitation workers, working public works, you know, low, lower income and they're folks who'd retired 20, some even 30 years ago and their retirement's based upon what their salary was back in those days, 20 or 30 years ago, not with their, not with the salary level is of that position this year. And again, as you point out, it's a one-time deal, but just to put my cards on the table, that was the, the funding source that I thought could be, could be used and that would not impact, you know, what we have before us tonight.
See, Madam President...
Mr. Keith.
And I, I will say this, so I'm, I actually tend, I mean, I'm split on both, but I will say, I tend to agree with Councilman Clinton because there is no way to account for the amount of retirees who are still on the health brand so that a number of them, considering age or whatever the situation, would get a sense of a check and whatever check size that is. On the other end though, I, I do not believe we need to wait to see what comes of excess money. I just don't think it's physically responsible and we need to account for that money now and, and since the, the big variable would be the insurance and I think that's on our agenda at V, we'll, we'll have to make that decision on how we account for it one way or the other. I, I don't think I can say I want to wait and use the spillover money that is on the way, no matter what it usually is or the forecasting is called it for. If we're going to give them the money, let's account for it now, let's understand what the insurance premiums are and move on and not wait for what I imagine would be another 30 days or so to see what that number is.
I guess, Ms. Sergeant, does anybody know what our unencumbered balance is going to be at the end of the year? I mean, any way to estimate that?
Not at this point.
What do we normally do with that? Is it invested? Do you have an earmark for anything?
Last year, it was a small amount. It was around $400,000, I believe, and we used it for resurfacing in potholes, repair and maintenance.
So it's again, it's going into the neighborhoods?
Yes, ma'am.
And it, and it wouldn't have been enough to fund the bonus this year?
And the year before, it was a larger amount, but it went to the body cameras.
To benefit our police officers and our citizens.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, I would say that's, what I've seen in, you know, in four years is it, it varies wildly, you know? It's, it's sometimes, you know, you know, something you would consider substantial. I mean, it, it almost fully, and two, two years ago, almost fully funded the, the body cam program, which is something that, that a lot of folks were calling for and I think we all agreed was a, was a critical program. You know, it, it is, when we have some there, where we're typically using it for, for a requirement that has come up to meet a shortfall that was unanticipated in the budget. And, you know, the, the challenge is, you know, as, as you say, that the state gave us an unfunded opportunity. If you, if you pass this tonight without solving how it's resourced, then you'll be giving us an unfunded mandate. And, you know, the, the payment to the, to the state is due by October 31st. We will not be anywhere near knowing what, what money may be carried over from 2017 by that date, so it would absolutely be money that we would stint, not, not knowing where, where it comes, where it comes from. So the only flexibility at that point you would have if, if there's not sufficient carryover really is to go into the capital plan and just increase the transfer from the capital plan back to the general fund in order to, to cover that or decrement some other program. And all the, you know, the only place where you really have flexibility in the general fund, you don't have any flexibility on, you know, giving employees no pay due, right? You're going to pay all the, all those salaries, there's no flexibility there. The only place you'd have flexibility is places where you're buying supplies, materials, other things for us to deliver services. So it would be a, a cut in services out of the general fund or reduction in investments out of the capital plan. That's, that's the only place council really has flexibility during the year of execution to find extra money.
And I, and I will say, if, I, I guess to support the resolution, I don't know if it's specific to the amendment, that it has to come from the spillover, but if it's, if it's not accounted for in this budget, I don't see how it is physically responsible. And if the spillover, again, can't be forecasted to be between a certain number that will allow us to pay for, either it can or it can't, you know, that, that is a, a call for you, but I, I just think if we're going to pay them, let's have the money in the budget, let's make the tough decision, take it from somewhere, pay them and, I don't know, recoup the costs from the spillover maybe, but let's not wait, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Mr. Clinton?
Uh, Councilman, this whole budget that we're doing now is a projection. We do not have $197 million sitting somewhere in the bank so that we can start October 1 paying out, you know, the budget. We're expecting, and they're good, you know, reasonable, conservative projections that we've had with finance direct... We're expecting, and they're good, you know, reasonable, conservative projections that we've had with finance directors over the years, and the mayor and the council working together uh to come up with reasonable estimates. And we've overall been pretty, pretty close, uh but again, sometimes we, we go over. But that hundred and ninety-seven million dollars up there, that is, that's a projection right there. And uh of that and everything that we have going in, uh the, uh we're talking about roughly uh well, well under uh one percent that we're talking about for the employees, we're talking about roughly a half of a percent that would be used for these retired employees. And again, uh I'm going by the history, there, there's been, there's been carryover uh from budget year to budget year. Uh and mysteriously, next month or whenever, there may be a substantial carryover. There may be, and that gets kind of aimed, you know, to go toward other projects. At the end of this current fiscal year, we could see uh uh carryover. But again, historically, there, there have been budget carryovers, uh some is earmarked and some is not ear, on ear. Some is not earmarked, and that's what I think uh we could use. I think it's a reasonable thing, uh retired employees, and they're not the fat cats. They've had, uh according to the numbers I've seen, uh they've had one increase. That was in the year two thousand fourteen, the city of Huntsville turned them down, uh or did not act on that request in two thousand eight, nor in two thousand seven. In this year, uh that, that radical organization Huntsville Utilities has seen fit to, to fund the, the bonus for its retirees. So I think we're being frugal, and at the same time, I think we, we want to recognize uh in, you know, those retired employees and what they've done for this community, and understand that many of them are very, very low-income folks who are really hurting, and they're not as fortunate as we are. And I think we certainly should have some compassion, and uh I think it's certainly good management to take care of them, just as uh other cities and agencies around the state have, have done for them also.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Are there any other comments regarding item thirteen C, the approving this budget? Hearing none, we will vote. All in favor of approving item thirteen C ordinance number seventeen dash seven hundred, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and the budget is approved as it has been presented. Thirteen D, resolution number seventeen dash seven one, seven zero one, authorizing the mayor to execute a master agency appropriation agreement between the city of Huntsville and various agencies. This was introduced on the September fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Motion from Mr. Keith, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion, Ms. Sargent, do you have anything to, to present, or is this pretty much folded into the other budget?
It's the same data that was originally presented, and it's in the original.
I would like to make an amendment.
Mr. Keith.
Um I make, I'd like to make an amendment to the proposed master agency appropriation agreement. Um this would be to add the North Huntsville Business Association in the appropriation of the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, and to amend the North Alabama African American Chamber of Commerce to show the appropriation amount of fifteen thousand dollars. This would be an increase of the general fund's expenditures by eight thousand dollars.
Um so increasing North Huntsville Business Associate, or adding North Huntsville Business Association by fifteen thousand dollars? And what was the other decreasing?
This would be, this would make the North Alabama African American Chamber of Commerce amount fifteen thousand dollars, it would, it would be a parity.
And their current amount is twenty-one thousand?
Yes, sir.
So decreasing it by six thousand dollars. Is there a second?
A second for the purpose of discussion.
Second by Mr. Culver. Uh is there a discussion regarding Mr. Keith's amendment?
And if I, I'm with colleagues, so as many of you know, I have discussed a number of times about the economic development that would be needed on North Parkway. Uh right now, the parity of um open facilities, non-used facilities, um the promotion of the Parkway sits about one to three south of university. Now, the North Huntsville Business Association, we had an earlier meeting earlier in the year, uh where we had fifty-two businesses show up. Giving them a kickstart opportunity is the same reason, I would imagine, and I was not here for the original appropriation act for the North Alabama African American Chamber of Commerce. There are certain areas of town um that can be led by the individuals who have shown the ability to have a comparable, effective business in the areas that need more business. Reggie McKenzie would be the president of this organization, they've had a number of buy-in, but this would be much like seed money. Um again, this is not to be an appropriation that would probably be carried on um over year, over year. But I absolutely believe that if given the right seed money and investment, we could see a number of things happen. They have done, done a number of things without seed money, but it gives them a, a startup of sorts for, again, a part of town, we can all agree, needs some sense of investment from the people who are there. As you all know, Reggie McKenzie runs a small, successful restaurant, and I think we can all agree, probably makes the best fish in Huntsville. Um but we're trying to take his talents, as well as the others who have made it through a very unique climate, and parlay that for other small businesses coming into the area. This again is a parity to what we already have, which I imagine was the same argument that started with the North Alabama African American Chamber of Commerce. And again, is an accountability point for not only Reggie, but all of the piece, uh pieces that we have for economic development.
And I, I think for, for purposes of transparency, I would also um let everyone know that, that Mr. Keith, in fairness, came and talked to me about South Huntsville Business Association, and if, if we would, if the South Huntsville Business Association would need this kind of a, a um appropriation as well. South Huntsville Business Association has been operating a little bit longer, and North Huntsville Business Association has. Uh the, the city has been um, has worked with us um in, by providing a lot of technical assistance as the, the organization was forming. We've also had conversations with the city about helping to fund specific projects potentially, particularly the work that's being done with Main Street Alabama, because the, we would need some money with regard to memberships, um attending some meetings, uh and eventually putting, funding the strategic plan. And we've talked about possibly accessing economic development funds for those. So the question on the table is, do we make North Huntsville Business Association an appropriation as part of this budget? And we know that once an agency is on there, they don't tend to come off. Uh or do we work with economic development funds to fund projects in North Huntsville, as we have with South Huntsville Business Association? So I guess I'm interested, Mr. Davis, your thoughts, I mean, how, would, would that be a possibility?
Um Madam President, very good question. We can handle that either way through the economic development capital funds. We've done that in the past uh for specific needs to promote certain areas of our city, uh but certainly it would be at the council's discretion.
And Madam President.
Go ahead, Councilman.
And Councilman Keith, I certainly applaud you and, and certainly support what you're doing. However, I had no idea that this appropriation would be coming from the North Alabama African American Chamber. Um just a bit of history, they were funded at twenty-five thousand. And Mayor, when we had to, in two thousand and eight, make those adjustments, we cut all of the agencies. Some we, we restored back close to where they were, and others we didn't. And uh the North Alabama African American Chamber was one of those that didn't get their funding restored back to the one hundred percent. But they've made some amendments and adjustments and, and are doing okay. Um I certainly want to support you in what impacts any area of our city, like Dr. Robinson in the uh Hazeland area. Uh that area, of course, is really coming into fruition now, and North Parkway, North Huntsville. We do need to focus on those, um but I wish we could find those monies from some of the other locations. Um and Shane, uh Mr. Davis, if, is it possible, we're looking at, what, about eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, so again, the, the reason that I, I think it's important to make this parallel is that um in one, creating a North Huntsville Business Association, it is specific to the Huntsville. Um North Alabama African American Chamber has some ambiguity. It probably covers a large foot track. And I wanted the parallel to be that if there was ever any drop in what they were doing for North Huntsville, that could be picked up by the North Huntsville Business Association. But as easy as I brought it on, it could be taken off. And again, this is an investment that is guaranteed. It is not to say that Shane cannot work with them, it is not to say that Shane can't work with anybody. But this offers an opportunity, in my opinion, from the city to say, we're willing to invest to somebody, a group of people who have seen and shown success and sustainability in a place where we ourselves have not invested. And this is a small seed.
And, and I certainly share your view, and I mean, I share your view one hundred percent. Um I'm, I'm just not very comfortable with taking it from one area that's trying to help in those same regards. Um I mean, if you were talking perhaps about the Madison County Chamber, the larger budget, of course, we'd all get thrown off the dais here, I see Mr. Cherry out there, but.
Now, now we can move, I, I guess.
And I'm not advocating that either because of the things that they do. But what I am seeing, if we could take some monies from that one cents on the, uh that, that one percent from the nine percent uh that we generated from that increase in the sales tax, and maybe use some of that money perhaps, uh is there, is there any way remotely possible that we can get that money and fund that project?
A- a- absolutely, as I, as I said, it'd be council's discretion. You know, if it was a reoccurring appropriation, meaning it was gonna be a long-term commitment, uh the one cent uh twenty-fourteen capital plan would not be the appropriate place. But if it's a one-time type effort to promote and encourage some economic development in a certain area, that's what it's for. It's what we use it for every year, it's a first-come opportunity projects throughout the city that we use. Uh so if it was a one-time type thing, certainly, you know, we've done that before uh in North Huntsville Industrial Park in different places, and happy to do so if it's council's discretion. If it was a long-term commitment, uh the appropriation would probably be the best location for it.
So Councilman Keith, can we experiment with it and maybe get the eight grand through economic development? And revisit this maybe next year?
So and, and again, this isn't for eight grand, this is for fifteen. And it is to create a mechanism to do exactly what North Alabama African American Chamber of Commerce is doing, specific to North Huntsville. It is, it is as intrinsically the argument that you would add North Huntsville if ever. And again, I trust Shane, but it, it is almost like we cannot make the same argument to keep something that does and not introduce an opportunity to do what it is originally planned to do. And I know that it might be uncomfortable, and I know that it might be different, but if there is a point at which we change that, that could happen in next budget cycle.
Have we had any discussion with the chamber and maybe those groups together?
Yes, sir, this is not coming without research, conversation, and meeting. Again, I, I, I led this charge, asking if there was enough of a populace of support to be at this point. And I, I'm standing before you, saying that this fifteen thousand really isn't much, in my opinion. But it can be changed in a year if we feel that it hasn't done much, hasn't done anything. But this is a guaranteed fifteen thousand that we don't have to worry about, Shane doesn't have to have it to look over, and it doesn't stop Shane from still being involved.
And, and I do understand that, and just piggybacking off of what uh President has said, once we do those things, they kind of become the, the status quo. And, and I know that Mr. um Mitchell was not here tonight to comment on that, but um even with the fifteen thousand, Mr. Davis, can we find the fifteen thousand dollars? Is that, is that remotely possible?
Are you speaking, Councilman Culver, from the economic development account?
From the economic development.
Absolutely, yeah, sure.
See, it, it, and, and Councilman Keith, it'll be difficult for us to come back later and try and refund the North Alabama African American Chamber. And uh, and they're, they're doing some, some positive things. Uh I mean, if they're defunct, then we need to take them completely out of the budget. Um but what I'm seeing in the last meeting that I've met with them, which was about a month ago, uh they presented some great ideas, and they do need uh more, more money. But I'm certainly open and receptive to giving this project that you're spearheading um in your district an opportunity. I guess the only, the discussion is just over where the funds come from. I think the idea is great, and uh you guys are gonna do some great things. I know the gentleman you're speaking of, he's done some impeccable things in North Huntsville. And I certainly want to do all that I can to help both you and Jenny. Now, Mr. Russell and Mr. Kling, you know, their districts are fine. But Dr. Robinson and, 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 and your district, uh Mr. Keith, certainly needs a, a lot of help, and I'm here to help. But I want to make sure that we can find those funds and, and try to get them to this particular project.
Well, let me say it this way then, how about I do you one better and say, i- if, if that is the case, if the worry is the funds, if there's ever any spillover need, then I will send them to Shane. So if North Alabama African American Chamber of Commerce says, you gave me fifteen, I need an extra input of five, six, seven, I'll send it to Shane. I'm also saying that I've had a commitment from the board of the North Huntsville Business Association that says it's fifteen all they need. So if there's ever any need from North Alabama African American Chamber of Commerce being at fifteen, we've spoken to Shane, he says he could do fifteen, I don't even need fifteen, we'll get them back to twenty-five through Shane. Then there would be no ask from North Huntsville Business Association, which saves us all money.
Devin, is this a one-time or recurring? I couldn't quite understand the way the wording was on this.
Again, the commitment question was from the board of the North Huntsville Business Association that said, with fifteen thousand dollars, we feel in a year, we could begin to promote the Parkway in the right way, and we will ask in a year for you to assess what we've done in a year. I said, that's, that's a fine commitment because.
So the door's kind of open where they may come back again, as Dr. Robinson was talking about.
Absolutely, but at that point, will, they will have had dues, and the conversation is not for a commitment to give them money back, but to do what we have already said we're doing with the North Alabama Ameri, African American Chamber of Commerce. And I think we're getting, getting the mix here. I'm, I'm reducing the amount of money spent, and we will use Shane more so as a support if extra money is needed. I'm also increasing the accountability, as well as investing in places that I imagine we can all agree need that investment.
Can we, can we just have the funding conversation really quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, you're taking six thousand from the North America, uh North, North America African American Chamber.
Yes, ma'am.
And moving it to uh the North Huntsville Business Association, but there's still a nine thousand dollar delta, where would that come from?
So the, it would be fifteen and fifteen.
Right, but where do you get the fifteen for, you're taking six thousand from the African American Chamber, but that's, I mean, you're taking six from the African American Chamber.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's still nine thousand to, to fund the, the, to get that, to get to that fifteen thousand dollars for North Huntsville Business Association.
That's, that's what I was asking, add to the budget.
So where does the nine thousand come from?
It would be the increased forty, we, I think we have forty thousand dollars over.
There was a minimal amount of excess revenue left when the budget was finished, less than fifty thousand dollars.
And so that nine thousand comes from there?
Yes, ma'am.
So then, so we've, we've addressed the, and the South Huntsville Business Association Board probably will want me to take me out and have me home somewhere for, for turning, for turning down the opportunity. But I, I really, I really think it's better to fund it through economic development, I just think that's a better model. There are so many agencies on this agency budget, we need, and there's very little accountability for these agencies. I, I really, this is one of my pet, pet peeves, we have millions of dollars going into this, this master agency appropriation agreement. And um, and I, I just hate the idea of adding one more thing, including something from my district. But Councilman Culver mentioned that Mr. Russell and Mr. Kling don't, don't have an interest in this, and I guess I would disagree, because there is a West Huntsville Business Association that has been formed.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I was saying that sarcastically, that their districts are doing well.
Oh, okay, but, 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 but we need to be aware that there is a West Huntsville Business Association. There's also Hampton Cove Business Association that's formed, they're called Grow Cove or something like that. And I think there are a couple of others that will pop up as they see that this is a successful model. So we are probably not only committing in this budget to fund the North Huntsville Business Association, but potentially other business associations. And the question we need to ask is, is this the right fund, the right way to fund this? Or does it come, need to come out of economic development?
And I'm, I'm comfortable with that coming out of economic development. Um for various reasons, I mean, I'll be honest, this is the first that I've, I've heard of this. And I, I know that these organizations that we've supported over the years um have grown accustomed to uh their budgets, and they have, you know, needs uh for, for their monies. Uh so with the new project, especially after finding some of the leftover monies, uh that means we don't have to find as much. I mean, you're only getting six thousand from the African American, North Alabama African American Chamber. So we can just find that six thousand then from the economic development. So we can just find that six thousand then from the economic development, coupled with the leftover funds, and still get fifteen grand. So I'm, I'm certainly in support of that. Thank you.
And I, I guess I'm, I just want to make it extremely clear. We are saying that we argue to put North Alabama African-American Chamber of Commerce at twenty-five thousand at some point. We argue the reason that they needed to be on there mirrors the same reason of which I'm now arguing, because it can't get more specific than African-American. But I'm saying that it meets a quadrant of our community. I'm also saying that the appropriation has had a conversation of which I was involved that is not guaranteed to go beyond, but will be accountable in every sense, because they asked for just this amount. I'm also saying it decreases the amount that we're giving out, and that if there's ever need for the African-American Chamber of Commerce, we have Shane as our failsafe.
And again, I, I just can't stand this. We have Shane as our failsafe, we have taxpayers' money that we're talking about, Mr. Davis doesn't have any of this money. It's taxpayers' money.
Taxpayers' money.
So we need to change the language.
I apologize. Thank you, Councilman Robinson. We have taxpayers' monies that is overseen by Shane. So...
We have the economic development.
We have economic development.
And again, it's, we're the ones that budget it. It has nothing to do with Mr. Davis.
Okay. Economic Development Fund. I, I'm just confused at how it is as efficient as probably whatever gets specific to another place, if there was ever another business association that come to the table, and we assess that that quadrant of the community needed some sense of investment. I mean, I would be here to hear the same argument. But obviously, that has not happened, and I'm bringing this one to the forefront because of that reason. So my argument is that equality is not equity.
We have, we have an amendment on the floor to add the North Huntsville Business Association, or an appropriation to North Huntsville Business Association for fifteen thousand dollars to the master agency agreement, and to decrease the North America Chamber of Commerce appropriation to fifteen thousand dollars. Is that correct? Are there any more comments on this?
Okay, I'm still unclear, one-time only, or is this a, the door is cracked open where it can be more than once?
This is a one-time seed investment. It can be considered that the next one, I have no problem taking it off in a year, I'll be here.
Any other comments or questions?
Do we do, do we do contracts with these folks? How does that, how does that work? We don't just appropriate money. Isn't there a contract saying that this agency will do such and such?
Mr. Hamilton, would you like to address that?
Ms. Sargent has an answer, and then I've got another point to add to that as well. Go ahead.
Ms. Sargent.
There is a letter sent to each agency that they must sign and return, saying that they've received a certain amount of an appropriation. They're required to send us a financial statement based on the size of their appropriation, either once a year, twice a year, or quarterly. And they are, they are, within that letter, it states in broad terms what the appropriation is for based on their organization.
And is there any accountability on the back end as to how they use that money? Or did they use it to, to metrics or outcomes?
We have just recently reinstated getting all these documents back from them for that purpose, so that we have that data for you as council members and us as the city to evaluate, and to ensure that it is being used correctly.
There is just a certain amount, there is a certain attitude of entitlement that accompanies some of these, this funding for some of these agencies. They fully expect to get it again, and that, that's part of what bothers me about this whole thing. So thank you for at least working toward it.
We have these books available for review.
And Madam President, actually, you started kind of down the road that I wanted to go, you know, when, you know, Mr. Kling's question, I think, because of the past practice of council and, and the budgets that the administration has proposed, is a very valid question in terms of multi-year versus single year. But the reality is, and so to make sure our citizens aren't confused, all of these appropriations are single year. None of these agencies have a commitment from council for any future years. Every one of these appropriations that you would vote on at this particular item is a single year commitment, and that's all you have. Now, typically, when, when the city has established a partnership, a resourcing partnership with these agencies, you've, you've typically continued to provide them resources. Sometimes it's held level, sometimes it increases, sometimes it decreases. Holding level is probably by far the most common outcome, but you have no commitments to any of these agencies beyond this, what you vote on tonight, which is just this next fiscal year. But I agree with you that many of them have, have come to expect it and rely on it. And I'm not suggesting that you remove them. I'm just saying that, you know, in terms of, you know, formally, legally, what you're going to vote on tonight is a single year commitment for each one of these, these agencies.
When was the last time we removed an agency?
I, I, top of my head, I don't know.
There was a homeless agency that was removed.
You're right. I think they, and I think they went out, you know, they, they were defunct, and so they were removed. Exactly.
Ready for the question? Any more comments? We, again, the amendment that is on the table is to add the North Huntsville Business Association appropriation for fifteen thousand dollars to the master agency appropriation list, and to decrease the North America Chamber of Commerce appropriation to fifteen thousand dollars. All in favor of approving Mr. Keith's amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Oh, that was an aye?
You said opposed.
Opposed.
Yes, I oppose under those conditions.
And I really could, did not get a clear sense of...
Madam President, I call, ask for a roll call vote.
Let's take a roll call vote. Mr. Keith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Mr. Culver?
No.
The chair votes no, but the amendment passes. Congratulations, Mr. Keith.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask, as a friendly amendment to what just passed, that there, be specified that there, there is no expectation, similar to what we just said, there's no expectation for this to continue past a first year. And it's a one-year contract.
And I think Mr. Hamilton has indicated that that is the assumption we make with the entire budget, that this is, every one of these appropriations is a one-year appropriation.
I think the, there is, for example, like the Chamber, the Art Museum, you know, they have a record, we're, we're comfortable with them, and they continue to do things. This, I think, I don't know if you want to get the intent of everybody from the council, but to me, it should be that this is a one-time deal. We've got a new council member who's got some ideas, and he wants to try out, and I think, you know, we should certainly give that individual chance to try out his ideas. That's what he brings to the table, just like all of us do. But the feeling of the council should be that this is meant to be a one-time deal, and, you know, maybe that could be specified extra strongly in the contract or the agreement, that this is a one-time deal.
Madam President, I would, you know, the, the letter that each of them receives could have a statement in there that makes, makes, makes certain it's clear to them that, that the particular appropriation that that letter addresses is solely for FY eighteen, and that it does not imply anything beyond that, which is exactly what you voted on, even though you may not necessarily say it.
And let me add, when I say thank you for the, the support that I did receive, and this increased need for efficiency, I started down this road with that auspices that I can help them get off the ground. This is to do nothing more than to catch up to the success of South Huntsville, of which the members have been going to those meetings X, Y, and Z. This is meant as a boost, nothing more. This is not meant to create in any sense, but to help them grow.
And I think we all recognize that. Again, the issue is with just adding one more agency to this budget.
Well, I would...
And that's really my, my main concern. But we do still have the, the main motion on the table to approve the budget itself. We've approved the amendment. So if we could just move on, Mr. Ke, Mr. Kling, is that okay?
That's okay. I was going to just say, I think both of y'all have done great jobs with your respective civic associations on the Parkway, getting the Parkway construction that you've had to endure, and, and it's that.
Yeah, and it will be very helpful as Parkway construction starts in North Huntsville as well. So the main motion on the table is to approve item thirteen D, resolution number seventeen dash seven zero one, authorizing the mayor to execute a master agency appropriation agreement between the City of Huntsville and various agencies. We have a motion, and we have a second. It has been properly amended. Are there any comments or other discussion? All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. And Mr. Culver, please note, Mr. Culver has abstained. All right, thirteen E, resolution number seventeen dash seven zero two, approving the City of Huntsville nineteen ninety capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty eighteen to twenty twenty seven.
Move for approval?
I'm sorry, hang on just a minute. We have, we're having technical difficulties. Do you need a chance, minute to go a few? Okay, all right. Resolution number seventeen, seventeen dash seven zero two, approving the City of Huntsville nineteen ninety capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty twenty seven, introduced September fourteenth, regular council meeting.
Move to approve the resolution?
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by the chair. Is there discussion regarding this? We have had the presentation in, in depth. Are there any additional questions regarding the nineteen ninety capital, capital improvement plan? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. And Eileen is having some challenges. We need a break. So we will take a, a short break to change paper. Five minutes, we will be back at eight twenty-seven. Hopefully, we can move along more quickly. We won't hit any of my favorite pet peeves anymore. Thirteen F is a resolution number seventeen dash seven zero three, approving the City of Huntsville twenty fourteen capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty eighteen, twenty twenty seven, introduced at the September fourteenth, regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the resolution?
Motion from Mr. Russell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Any discussion or questions? Again, this was presented earlier. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Fifteen, or thirteen G, ordinance number seventeen dash seven zero six, amending ordinance number eighty-nine dash seven-nine to provide all eligible employees of the City of Huntsville a cost of living adjustment COLA, as reflected in the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget effective October nine, twenty seventeen, introduced at the September fourteenth, twenty seventeen, regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Again, this was presented to us earlier. This is a one percent COLA in the amount of one point one million dollars in the budget. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. And that includes, that concludes all the budget items. Thirteen H is ordinance number seventeen dash seven zero five, amending section twenty-two point one four of ordinance zero four dash three one five, conference and travel policy of the Code of Ordinances, introduced September fourteen, twenty seventeen, at the regular council meeting.
Move for approval?
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Kling. Are there any questions or comments regarding this? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Brings us to new business. These items are for introduction, will be considered at the October fourteen, at the October twelve council meeting, except for item fourteen B, for which we have been asked to give unanimous consent and consideration this evening. Fourteen A is the introduction of an ordinance annexing two acres of land lying on the east side of Paul Drive and west of Big Cove Road. Again, there is no action on this. It will be considered at the October twelve, this introduction only, considered at the October twelve council meeting. Item fourteen B, introduction of an ordinance annexing seventy-six acres of land lying east of Liberty Hill Road and east of Route Road.
Madam President, I move for unanimous consent to consider this item tonight.
Second by the chair. We will have a roll call vote regarding unanimous consent. Mr. Keith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Mr. Culver?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We will consider this item tonight for unanimous consent.
Madam President, I move for approval of the ordinance annexing seventy-six acres of land lying east of Liberty Hill Road and east of Route Road.
Second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Ash, Ms. Nichols.
This annexation request is approximately seventy-six acres. This is located north of the North Huntsville Industrial Park area. This property is on the east side of Liberty Hill and east of Route Road. This property is currently vacant land. Planning staff would, has requested the unanimous consent. This item is a critical portion of a proposed industrial use that will locate near this area, and that item is very time sensitive. So that was the reason for requesting the unanimous consent tonight.
Thank you. Any other, any questions for Ms. Nichols or Mr. Davis? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Again, fourteen C, introduction of an ordinance amending ordinance number twelve dash one zero two seven, eligibility requirements for retirement health benefits. And fourteen D, introduction of an ordinance declaring certain equipment surplus to be sold at public auction. These items will be considered on October twelfth. We will move now to, does someone have a comment?
I was going to ask, I thought it might be helpful if we got Mr. Thomas, if he could just give a, an overview of fourteen C.
Mr. Thomas, would you give us a quick overview of fourteen C, please?
Yes, Council. Fourteen C is just clarification in our current ordinance. There's language that kind of contradicts, that gives the impression that someone can add someone to the retiree insurance after they retire. We just want to clarify that language.
Any questions for Mr. Thomas? We will move on, then, thank you, Ms. Thomas. We move on then to new business items for consideration or action. We will consolidate these items. If anyone wishes to hold any items, please let the, let us know what those are.
Madam President, I wish to hold fifteen L, fifteen Z, fifteen AJ, and fifteen AL, which was added.
Madam President, can we also hold fifteen V, Victory?
And also, the chair wishes to hold fifteen I and fifteen J. So we will hold fifteen I, fifteen J. Fif, oh, Mr. Culver.
Fifteen F.
Okay, let's see if we've got them all. Fifteen F, fifteen I, fifteen J, fifteen L, fifteen V, fifteen Z, fifteen AJ, fifteen AL. Is that all of them?
That's correct.
Did we catch them all? Okay, F, I, J, L, V, Z, AJ. Authorizing a purchase and sale agreement between the City of Huntsville and Atlantic Investments. Fifteen K is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Progress Bank Letter of Credit number nine zero 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 four zero three two zero zero for midtown on the park, phase five. Fifteen M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement between the City of Huntsville and Michael and Laura Ennis. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a license agreement between the City of Huntsville and Downtown Huntsville, Inc. Fifteen O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Building and Earth Sciences, Inc., for construction testing services for public parking deck, Bob Wallace, project number seventy-one dash seventeen dash SP four five. Fifteen P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and BL Harbor International LLC for project management services for Redstone Gateway Infrastructure Projects, project number seventy-one dash seventeen dash SP two five. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Smith Engineering Company, Inc., for Weatherly Road Extension, Phase Two, also known as the Hazland Road Extension, project number sixty-five dash fifteen dash RD zero three. Fifteen R is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and low bidder Reed Contracting Services, Inc., for Redstone Gateway Boulevard Extension and Write-Out Road Signalized Intersection, project number seventy-one dash seventeen dash SP zero five. Fifteen S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver LLC for engineering design services for western area WWTP disinfection improvements, project number seventy-one dash seventeen dash SF zero one. Fifteen T is a resolution authorizing the mayor to renew a group accident insurance policy for volunteers for Markel Insurance Company. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an application for excess workers' compensation insurance with Safety National Casualty Corporation. Fifteen W is a resolution authorizing a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Phyllis J. Smith for a general clerk three. Fifteen X is a resolution authorizing a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Joyce Douglas for a general clerk three. Fifteen Y is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modifications, number nine, to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Behavioral Health Systems, Inc. Fifteen A is a, double A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the low bidders, meeting specifications as outlined in the attached bid, summary of bids for acceptance. Fifteen AB is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number sixteen dash six five nine by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. Fifteen AC is a resolution authorizing travel expenses. Fifteen AD is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. Fifteen AD is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. Fifteen AE is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number sixteen dash six five nine by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds. Fifteen A F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute financial advisory services agreement with Public Financial Management, Inc. Fifteen AG has been deleted. Fifteen AH is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number four and final between the city of Huntsville and Pierce Construction Company, Inc. for construction services for the Huntsville Aquatic Center addition located at twenty-two thirteen Drake Avenue. Fifteen AI is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one and final between the city of Huntsville and Dunlap Construct, Contracting, Inc. for Bronze Spring Park restroom facilities. Fifteen AK is a request for authorization advertising Phil One Regular Full-Time Environmental Specialist Two Grade Fifteen at higher minimum rate if necessary.
Madam President, I move for consolidation, approval of fifteen A through E, fifteen G, fifteen H, fifteen K, fifteen M through fifteen U, fifteen W through Y, fifteen double A through double AF, fifteen AH, fifteen AI, and fifteen AK.
Madam President, before you proceed with that, I believe there are a couple of items that depend on funding on your number L, so L would need to be considered.
Was L, L was held.
Correct, correct, and what I'm saying is that would need to be considered and/or passed before those two items.
Oh, well, that would have been good to know, so which items?
I am not sure, I'm trying to, to get that momentarily.
Okay, okay, well, we, we will take up L then after we, well, but you're suggesting we can't pass any of this until we've done L.
Well, I need to find out which two that is.
So we can't, so we're stuck.
We could just hold L until the consolidation.
Okay, P and R.
P and R need to, need to be held until after you do L.
Madam President, I add fifteen MP and fifteen R to my motion for consolidation approval.
No, I think that, L needs to be done first.
I mean, to hold them out, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The opposite.
Okay, so, and I would second your motion, Mr. Russell, as it has been stated. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, then we will go forward here. Item F, fifteen F is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter into a license agreement between the city of Huntsville and International Church of Four Square Gospel doing business as Huntsville Four Square Church. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion or questions?
Yes, I'm just trying to figure out, I've noticed there aren't any monetary considerations here.
Correct.
So what is the agreement?
So, I, the, it's, you know, it's a small, really just asphalt area that can serve for overflow parking there at the end of Gulf Road. It's an area that, just because it's so out of the way and so hidden, has oftentimes been a, you know, a place where people have dumped cars and collected trash and things like that. So really, the agreement is that the church, we've put security around that area, they're gonna help, you know, maintain security for it and keep it cleaned out when necessary, and in exchange for that, they're able to use it for overflow parking if they need it. So really, if they have kind of a larger event and they need some overflow parking, they'll have access to it, so it is gated now, they'll have a key to that gate and they'll be able to, to use it if necessary.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Any other questions?
Clarification, thank you, Madam President.
All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Fifteen I is a resolution appointing Lonzo C. Robinson to the position of municipal court judge, chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, any comments? This is again to fill our judge vacancy, we had a great process and many thanks to everyone who was involved in creating that process, it worked wonderfully. All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Robinson is, is appointed as the judge. Fifteen J, resolution appointing Jeffrey Kate Grimes to the position of municipal court judge.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Again, this is appointing a judge vaca, vacancy as a result of the creation of a new position. Any, all in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries and Mr. Grimes is appointed.
Madam President. I might mention that I want to congratulate counsel, you've added two great members in his judge, I have, I have had conversations with each of the candidates for presiding judge, and, and all of them have some great ideas on the things that can be done to improve municipal court, to make it better, to, to just improve on processes and what we have, both for our citizens out there, for our police officers, for the prosecution, for the defendants, and just, just inefficiencies on how we move forward. We will move very quickly on naming a presiding judge, but I want to say thank you to the counsel because all three judges had fantastic ideas about how to move forward and how to make sure that we had a good court system, so thank you for your work. I think it was a lot of hard work, but I think you came out with a great process and great candidates there.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We'll move on now to fifteen L. Again, this is an item that has been presented for unanimous consent, a fifteen L ordinance authorizing issuance by the city of Huntsville of its taxable limited obligation TIF revenue warrant, TIF five, series twenty seventeen B in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed four million dollars.
Madam President, I move for unanimous consent to consider this item tonight.
Second by the chair, all in favor of unanimous consent, we will begin with a roll call vote. Mr. Keith?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Mr. Culver?
Aye.
Chair, chair votes aye, we will now consider it.
Madam President, I move for approval of the ordinance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith, Mr. Davis.
Counsel members, this is part of TIF five, which is Redstone Gateway Park, the EUL and Redstone Arsenal, if you remember, Corporate Office Property Trust is the finance E to the city to guarantee those TIFs, so anytime we go do public infrastructure out there, we have to request a TIF warrant from them, and that's what this action would do.
Thank you.
And it would fund items P and, I believe it is.
P and R.
R that you will vote on, should you approve this.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, and now we can move on to items P and R. Fifteen P, resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the city of Huntsville and BL Harbor International LLC for project management services for Redstone Gateway Infrastructure Projects, project number seventy-one dash seventeen dash SP twenty-five.
Move to approve the resolution.
Motion from Mr. Russell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver, any discussion or questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Fifteen R is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Huntsville and low bidder Reed Contracting Services, Inc. for Redstone Gateway Boulevard Extension and Write-Out Road Signalized Intersection, project number seventy-one dash seventeen dash SP oh four.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Kling.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver, any comments?
Madam President, could we get explanation from Mr. Davis on what this is?
Mr. Davis, please, Kathy, Kathy Martin, please.
Yes, sir, thank you, it, it is to award to the low bidder Reed Contracting, they are constructing about three hundred feet of a new five lane roadway to extend the second leg of Redstone Gateway Boulevard to a new signalized intersection now that the gate has been moved further back.
So how, how will that help our citizens?
It will create the connectivity needed for the park to, to function.
Okay.
All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. It brings us to item fifteen V, however, since fifteen V is directly connected to the Mr. Kling's amendment, I would suggest that, that we take it out of order after our discussion and, and consideration of AL, does anyone have an objection to that?
A question, I got a question about it, I don't see the connection between this and what I'm proposing, because there's two separate things, aren't they?
It's, it's.
At least what I'm proposing has no linkage, if somebody else wants to amend it.
Mr. Keith?
Like, I don't know who would speak to the clarity of it, but basically, this agreement allows for there to be a conversation around premium increase. I guess what we heard earlier was that the mayor had originally agreed to stay the, the interest increase, and I would imagine, again, though it's hard to quantify what that is, we pass this, he acts on behalf of the city and the physical responsibility, the premiums go up, that accounts for, I don't know what that number is, that affects some people and then some people that we do, if we do, again, I do want to approve for the retirees, that's, that's sort of one hand and, you know, a dozen, half a dozen, whatever the saying is, it really does nothing for us, really.
Madam President, I guess in that case, if that's the understanding, I would object because this is one thing completely separate, the funding source that I'm talking about is completely different, I know we're talking about carryover, but again, the whole budget that we're dealing with, that we just passed, it's based on a projection that we have of revenues of a hundred and ninety million some odd dollars, it's not based on anything that's in hand. So I would object and think that these two should, should be considered separately from each other.
So, Mr. Riley, let me ask, if, if we approve this renewal agreement, and then it turns out that this would be the, the renewal agreement which specifies premiums for retirees and holds them level, and then wind up funding the bonus with, and having, and funding the bonus with, with an increase in premiums, can we go back and amend the agreement?
Can you go back and amend which agreement now?
The Blue Cross agreement. Increasing, increasing the fee, the premiums for retirees.
It would appear you could, you, I do not have a ready answer to that issue. I believe Mr. Kling's statement that he's making, that the two are not necessarily connected, is a correct one, but I would advise the counsel to, of course, consider their overarching requirement that although they can adopt alternatives to the budget ordinance, that they have to authorize, make sure that in no event they're authorized expenditures exceed estimated revenues and resources. So I think the point that you are trying to make, Madam President, is that if there is a change of this nature, as Councilman Kling proposes, there has to be, based upon our present budget consideration, a source for those funds, and it appears that those have been identified from your remarks as coming from this particular source, which would be the, the, the premiums for the retiree health benefits.
Madam President, the, the proposed resolution, I think council members have a copy, and it came from the city attorney's office, Ms. Cates put together, has no mention about any linkage to the, to this item on the agenda, they're completely separate.
Right, I guess I'm confused, if we don't know how much is coming after the budget, we know how much we need to pay the, I don't know, seven hundred, whatever the number is for the retirees.
Seven twenty-eight.
How do we pass a budget that says when we get enough money, we'll pay you?
Okay, it is based upon the, it's got two sources in there, I'm sorry, I don't want to get off the subject.
We're, we're not on that, we're not on that agenda item yet.
Okay, hold on, but it's completely separate.
So, so Mr. Kling's right, this, it is, it is, it is separate, they are only linked in, in the fact that in the current budget, the, the trade-off was.
I agree, so.
Madam President, if I could, I mean, there's been two or three questions asked that, that I think I could offer some clarity on, so the question of can counsel in the future amend the, the premiums that we effectively charge to employees or to retirees, the answer is yes. So we have an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield that sets the total premium costs, the city chooses to pay a certain portion of that, and we choose to charge the, the beneficiary a certain amount, that is, that is counsel's discretion. So at fifteen V, only a portion of that is you setting how much would be paid for by the retiree or by the employee, depending on which category, so you, you would have the authority to come back at the next council meeting and amend that if, if necessary. The, you know, the challenge with, with not considering them together, and the reason, you know, Mr. Kling, I think very rightly asked, how was the connection there from the administration's perspective, on multiple occasions, the discussion either, either initiated by, by the administration or in some cases initiated by counsel, has linked those two things together. The mayor said consistently that if, if we choose to do the bonus, the, the appropriate source of that funding is the premium amount on, and on the, on the insurance, and that point has been discussed multiple times here in, in public by counsel, and so that's, that's why there's the linkage there, is because that's been the only source of possible funding. The challenge with, with AL is it, it seeks to apply a source of funding that will not exist, and we won't know if it will exist at the time we're obligated to make the payment. We will have to amend the FY eighteen budget in order to make that payment prior October thirty-first, because there is no other source of funds that will be available, the resolution as written will not give the administration the authority we need to actually act on the deadline the state has given us in their statute.
In the, in the past, we have made budget amendments, budget transfers throughout the budget year, what we have now, what we just passed is a budget of a hundred and ninety some odd million dollars, you know, for, for the general fund, and we've got a revenue projection of basically the same dollar amount. Council members, I think we know based on past history, the budget income that we receive is going to be different than that, it may, it'll vary, it could vary, a couple hundred thousand dollars one way or another, it could, you know, it's going to be different. Our revenue, I mean, our, our expenses that we have, we've got a hundred and ninety some odd dollars. Again, that's a blueprint, it's an estimate, Councilman Keith, because we don't know what's going to happen during the year, how much are we going to have contract overruns, are we going to have unforeseen legal expenses, are we going to have unforeseen health insurance costs? Everything we've got is a budget estimate and a revenue estimate, but it's going to vary, we're going to make adjustments during the, during the course of the year, and I think we're, you know, I know everybody's got their ideas on this thing, but I think we just need to vote it up, you know, vote one up, vote it down, get to the retiree issue, vote it up, vote it down, and just, you know, be upfront on, on where we stand and just move on. But again, guys, I promise you, when we get down to next summer and we're looking at the budget, we're going to see some different numbers, the, the revenue projections can be up or down, and our expenses that we have can be up or down, but we're just coming up with, with what we think is a conservative, a good reasonable estimate of where we are, but, you know, we've got, we've got a long ways to go in the new fiscal year.
The, the whole, the, the whole, just of this is though, that we have to have a balanced budget, bond rating agencies look at us and say you have to have a balanced budget, if you're AAA rated city, you're going to have to have a balanced budget, and you're not going in as a balanced budget if you have an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure that is not covered by revenues, and that, that's the, that's the problem, if we just say we think we can cover it with revenues, we, we don't have a balanced budget. And to counsel, I will say, you know, we've got to make sure that, that when we finish this budget process, that we have a balanced budget, one that reflects what we have done in the past nine years as a AAA rated community.
You know, I could, could add, Mr. Kling, you're absolutely correct that the, the budget is a projection, and while we project a hundred and ninety-seven million in revenues and we project a hundred and ninety-seven million in expenses, the biggest bulk of those are paid out every two weeks, so no, we don't start the year with a hundred and seventy-nine, a hundred and ninety-seven million dollars sitting in the bank, it's collected throughout the year and is expended throughout the year. The, the challenge that we have with this particular issue is the administration only has the authority to expend those funds that counsel appropriates. We don't have the authority inside the FY eighteen budget to, to pay the retiree bonus, because you did not appropriate any dollars in that budget for the retiree bonus. We, we will be required to send a check prior October thirty-first, and as it stands, as it stands right now, that money will, we will not have the authority to send that money, because you will not have appropriated the dollars required for it.
Okay, but we could, we could borrow from one city account and then pay back, you know, as revenues come in, the assumption that revenues are going to be at or possibly even a little bit higher, because I think traditionally, our budget projections, our revenue projections are a little bit on the conservative side, which is why we have, you know, surplus that we deal with, what, late October, November, somewhere along that line. I mean, is there a way we could, we can do an inner city government transfer borrowing from one account to fund this and then pay it back?
That, that will require a budget ordinance, amendment to the ordinance in order to do that.
We, we're having a lot of conversations about how to fund, thank you, we're, we have a lot of conversations about how to fund the, the bonus, we, we need to decide whether or not we are going to address this at this time.
Specifically, I have a question for V, as we have.
Okay, then, then we will move on to, to fifteen V. Fifteen V is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute the renewal agreement with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Alabama for group health insurance administrative services, chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, Mr. Mr. Thomas.
Yes, yes, counsel, this is the agreement with Blue Cross that we approve each year to administer our group health plan.
Specifically, Mr. Thomas, the mayor has the ability to either hold and say that we will cover a certain part of the, this agreement allows him to say we will cover a certain part of the premiums, or we will not, and we can look at the percentage increase of what that would be?
In this agreement, there are set out premiums that we will charge our employees or retirees that has been set before you in this agreement, so that has been determined by administration and based upon our review and discussion with Blue Cross. So that has been determined by administration and based upon our review and discussion with Blue Cross Blue Shield, what we need to charge our employees and retirees. So that is included in this agreement.
And it will take council action to change that.
That is correct, yes.
Yes, so our action is to change if he does, if we do cover a certain portion. If there was a change, it would be us to change if we do cover a certain portion.
It would be the council's decision to make a change to the premiums that we charge, yes, sir.
Sounds good.
At, at what point do those premiums go into effect for our employees? I mean, how long do we have before we have to change them and let employees know you're going to have to pay more?
We, we need to do it now. The premiums don't go into effect until January one, but there's a lot of work that goes in place to get information to Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have to get ready for open enrollment, which will be next month. So we've got to print out documents with the premiums on them. So that's why it's important that we go ahead and make a decision about what those premiums are.
So this goes back to my original question, can we amend? And it sounds like we can amend, but it would be really hard, probably be very unfair to the employees, and certainly create some difficulties.
It creates challenges, but yes, the council has the right to make an amendment at any time they want to.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
If I could offer a suggestion, I would voice my support for this. Let's go ahead and pass this, and then let's go have our discussion on the other issue. But I don't think we need to link them, but if, you know, we could look at options, have some ideas, amendments or whatever to the other thing, or vote it down, whatever. But I don't think we need to, I think it's messing things up to try to take this, pass it, and then come back later, change it, don't, you know, change it around where it's not going to be what we said. So I would voice support for the amendment as is, I mean, as the item here as is. I think we should go ahead and take that, put it to bed, then we can go back to square one on the other issue.
All right, any other comments, questions? Mr. Keith, did you have a comment?
No, ma'am.
All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to fifteen Z, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of Huntsville and Red Brick Strategies, Inc. for creation and installation of a mural in Big Spring Park.
Move for approval, second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. All I can say is it's too bad.
So, you know, sometimes murals get dated, sometimes, you know, you want to come back and put something different on top of it. You can do that, or, or we can clean it off as well.
Thank you. It's a process to get something like this. Is it usually through Joy, or is it like a Arts Hunts, like this is just like a, we know this person or something?
So, you know, I would probably say that almost every single one of them has been unique. Typically, public art projects are really led and championed by Arts Huntsville. In this particular case, it was really kind of a, a citizen coming to the city, and so a department head worked with them on it, so it was a little bit unique. But, you know, typically Arts Huntsville is, is who's leading these efforts.
Thanks.
Other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to AJ, fifteen AJ. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a project development agreement among the City of Huntsville, the Industrial Development Board, and the City, and the City of Huntsville, and Aerojet Rocketdyne, Inc.
Move to approve the resolution.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from the chair, Mr. Davis.
Councilmembers, thank you for all today. I think Mayor Battle wants to have.
I might say very quickly that this is an opportunity, if you remember, we had the announcement about the defense headquarters of Aerojet Rocketdyne moving to the City of Huntsville. The, in addition, we are doing a production facility for them. We are doing it in North Huntsville, in our North Huntsville Park. It is something that, you know, we, we have long been working to make sure that we can provide jobs in the North Huntsville area. And Mr. Keith, congratulations, this is the first one in your park. And so I'd like for Mr. Davis kind of give you some overviews of it.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. So council members, just a little background on Project Pyramid is what the code name was nationally for this project. Project Pyramid was a competitive economic development project by Aerojet Rocketdyne, which evaluated several locations throughout the United States consisting of three separate project evaluations. So what I mean by that is the RFP that went out nationally had three projects within that RFP to compete for. As Mayor Battle just mentioned, we were successful in winning two out of three of those projects within that RFP. Of those is the Defense Headquarters Rocket Shop relocation, and then the advanced, new, brand-new advanced manufacturing facility portion of the, the three portions of RFI. Aerojet Rocketdyne is an American rocket and missile propulsion manufacturer headquarters in Sacramento, California. AR has current operations, limited operations in Cummings Research Park, as well as Florida, Arkansas, Virginia, Washington, New Mexico, Utah, Tennessee, and New Jersey. As you can see, it was a very competitive project with multiple locations throughout the US, and Aerojet making their decision where to do this relocation and expansion. Aerojet Rocketdyne currently manufactures rocket engines for both private and, and government use, to include the RS twenty-five, which is, will be the engine for the SLS, the RS ten, the RS sixty-eight, and the AJ sixty-eight are well-known, tried and true engines that AR has been manufacturing for quite some time. They also have new engines in product development stages, include the AR one, the AR twenty-two. So the, the project and the development agreement we have before you tonight, the project consists of two components, as Mayor Battle mentioned. One is the relocation of the Defense Business Headquarters, the project management, the engineering, and rocket shop business units of Aerojet Rocketdyne. And then the second is operation of a new advanced manufacturing facility for composites, additive manufacturing, and engine assembly. That would be in North Huntsville Industrial Park. The guaranteed employment numbers is a minimum of seven-hundred-and-five jobs. The minimum average wage is seventy-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty dollars a year, or thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents per hour. The company's committed capital investment for the new Defense Headquarters Rocket Shop is eleven-and-a-half million dollars. And then their investment into the advanced manufacturing facility would be sixteen million dollars. So their minimum required project investment per this development agreement before you is twenty-seven-and-a-half million dollars into our community. Project locations to be determined for the new Defense Headquarters, the program management engineering rocket shop, we do know it will be in Cummings Research Park. I think those, should you approve the development agreement tonight, they will finalize that location. It will become public, you know, very soon, within the next thirty, sixty days. As we do know, the advanced manufacturing composites and engine assembly factory would be in North Huntsville Industrial Park. It would lie just north of Toyota Motor Manufacturing, on the frontage of Pulaski Pike and Prosperity Drive. Project timelines, the Defense Business Headquarters and Rocket Shop relocation and, and new headquarters will start to take effect sometime in January twenty eighteen. The advanced manufacturing facility actually has a shorter timeframe for the company to get up and running, and construction of that would, would start just in a couple of months, in December of twenty seventeen. So new job placement, what are our local commitments? As you know, you know, bringing jobs to any community is a competitive environment. This is something that we've taken pride in, the work that is going on behind the gate with Marshall, and then our private industry that, that are doing things in the park. Mayor Battle has touted many times that we consider ourselves the propulsion capital of the world, not just the United States. And this project was very critical to add to that and to maintain that. We went very aggressively with this because of just what it is doing and, and the efforts that Marshall's doing. So we have a twenty-five-hundred-dollar per new job for relocation, to assist in that relocation. The incentive will be awarded at hundred-job increments. So what I mean by that is those payments will not be made to a hundred jobs that are full-time, in-line, at the city. The company will be required to maintain those jobs for a five-year commitment, and at thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents per year. Should either one of those fall short, either the five-year commitment for each hundred jobs, or the pay average annual wage go down, failure to do so will be a recapture payment by the City of Huntsville from Aerojet Rocketdyne. So the public is protected. We're guaranteeing a return on investment as we always do when we bring this before you. And that's it for the headquarters, the rocket shop, the engineering, and the program management piece of our local commitment to assist. The advanced manufacturing facility, we put together what we think is a very unique proposal for this project, and it, it proved to be successful. Our industrial development board will construct and own a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-square-foot facility in North Huntsville Industrial Park. Aerojet Rocketdyne has agreed to lease that facility for thirty years. The responsibility for all maintenance, repair, and replacement costs within that facility will lie on Aerojet Rocketdyne. So those liabilities will not fall on our industrial development board, nor this council and the City of Huntsville. The lease rate will cover the IDB's debt service on the building, plus provide additional income, new income, to the industrial development board for such things as providing new investments throughout our community, as we have counsel over the years for North Huntsville Industrial Park, Chase Industrial Park, CRP, and the like. So it provides them an income stream. We get new jobs out of it and, and new revenue streams coming into our city. Aerojet Rocketdyne will make property tax payments based on the facility, just because the IDB is the owner of that. They will not be exempt from paying taxes. They will pay for that, is in the development agreement.
Education taxes.
Education portion of the taxes. And then Aerojet Rocketdyne will invest an additional sixteen million dollars into this industrial development board-owned facility. So they will make a, a more capital investment into an asset of that IDB. Aerojet will have the ability at year twenty-one of the thirty-year lease to purchase the facility should they desire from the industrial development board. That purchase price will be an appraised value at market rate at that time. Answer any questions that you may have, council members.
Shane, how much is the relocation already, I guess, en route when it comes to jobs? Is seven-hundred-and-five? How many are they already bringing? I imagine they have a certain number they're already bringing?
So of the seven, very good question, of the, of the seven-hundred-and-five, it is still to be determined. The initial rocket shop is seventy-five jobs manufacturing, we think will very quickly grow to a hundred-and-fifty. So if you subtract that, you're around five to five-hundred-and-fifty that will either relocate. Some of those employees will choose to relocate. If not, they will be filled here locally. So that's to be determined what that total relocation number will be. That's why we placed that at a twenty-five-hundred-dollar per job.
So in the twenty-five-hundred relocation, it's almost an incentive for them to, to hire locally?
Yes, and, and come into our community and help grow our population and grow our tax base.
I guess my last question, first of all, great presentation, great work. You guys are awesome. Does the chamber do a, I saw the chip here, do we have like a, I don't want to say a welcome committee, but do we sort of incentivize the relocation process with realtors, and does the chamber sort of orchestrate, or do they just do it in their own terms?
No, no, we do. You know, that, that's one thing, we take great pride in this community with BRACs. And, and, you know, Boeing bringing their engineering of excellence here, and, and others that have done this move. We, we tout that, where they'll have special weekends to where Aerojet Rocketdyne may bring thirty employees for the weekend to Huntsville. Our chamber will coordinate that, get with those families, tour the community with them, get them into the schools, let them see our quality of life, and, and get with realtors and different things to really welcome into the community, help them acclimate. And then once they make that decision to get here, you see our chamber roll up her sleeves and get really active to get those families engaged in the community where they want to be engaged, and make them feel at home. And we've been very successful, you know, our relocation rates for corporations, we show that when we compete for projects like this, and it's one of the reasons we are successful, is we, you know, a company's greatest assets are employees. So to make a relocation decision, it's very critical to have that quality of life we all speak about, and, and have that cost-living index that, that we take pride in, that's about ninety-two percent of the national average. You put all that together, and then we show our track record of having seventy-eight percent. You know, when Remington came in, they said we, our top five percent, we've got to get them to move. Every one of them moved. Boeing had very similar cases that, so yeah, they take a very active role, and those guys do a great job.
Chip, make sure you take them out to eat at G's Country Kitchen. I'm sure you'll end on them. Last question is, is you continue to build up the industrial park, I imagine, is there sites set on, as we talked about, I just had the whole bypass meeting, are there sites set on other properties, I guess you could say, around the area? Because I imagine as, as you get the ball rolling, that place builds up, there has to be some commercialization. Is there, are there plans to consider other sites, not just specific to manufacturing, but development of other places as well as?
Absolutely. We, we have some projects continuing in the works in North Huntsville Industrial Park. And then we're possibly bringing you something either late this year or early next year to maybe adjust the, the lot prices out there. I think we were, when we created North Huntsville Industrial Park, we were a little too aggressive on those prices, compared to what other industrial properties there is on in the city. So Michelle Jordan and I have been looking at that and, and, and working with the chamber. And we're still trying to fine-tune what that may be, but there's a lot of activity up there. It's something we're promoting very hard and having some success. I, I think Aerojet's one of those success stories.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Davis? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
As always, council members, we really appreciate your support on economic development. Thank you.
We appreciate your good work. All right, this brings us to fifteen AL. Fifteen AL is a resolution approving a one-time bonus for retired city employees and beneficiaries of deceased members or deceased retirees of the City of Huntsville pursuant to the provisions of Section Two of Act three sixty-seven of the regular session of the twenty-seventeen legislature.
Move for approval?
Motion by Mr. Kling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Now, we've talked around this, and now is actually the time to talk about it.
Okay, well, we, we're kind of spontaneous up here, but that's because we don't get to talk behind the scenes. So I think everyone can see, we certainly are complying with the, with the open meeting law. What is being proposed in this, again, it's a, it's a one-time bonus, and it's only when it's authorized by the legislature, as, as Mayor Battle, you know, pointed out. Based on history, the bonus had previously been brought for consideration to the city council in FY oh-seven and oh-eight, and we did not support it. It did come up FY fourteen, we did approve it, so we're one for three. This would be twenty-four dollars per year per retiree, or approximately seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, which was the numbers I had gotten, for approximately eleven-hundred-and-sixty-five employees. Mayor Battle may have more recent information than I have on whether it's eight-fifty or, or seven-twenty-eight. Again, most of these folks are people, I mean, all these are folks who served the City of Huntsville. Most of them are people who were from, shall we say, not the most affluent areas in the, you know, in city government. Public works, working on the back of a garbage truck, as it was known. And as a person who retires twenty years ago, thirty years ago, their retirement's based upon what their salary was in those days, not for what the same position may be today. And what is being proposed was in this, and I'm open if somebody has a better idea. What is being proposed is to use the budget carryover for the current fiscal year. And if that was not enough there, then we'd use the budget carryover for the FY eighteen budget that we just passed. And I agree with everybody, we want to be reasonable, we want to be conservative. But as I pointed out, the, the budget that we just passed, it's based on a projection. We don't have the money in hand. And historically, when we look at previous year's budgets, there's always been a surplus, a carryover, that we've used of projects that are not, or, you know, there's carryover money that's not encumbered. And I'm certainly understand that when we have a million-dollar project, and we've only spent five-hundred-thousand of it, and then we're carrying over five-hundred-thousand to the following fiscal year, that's not anything that, that we're touching. So I'm just putting that on the table. I think we, we do appreciate our employees, and our former employees. And again, since they've only had one increase authorized by the legislature that we, that we passed in the last roughly ten years, I think this is something that I feel comfortable about, you know, bringing to the council for consideration.
Are there any comments, Mr. Keith?
John, do you have, just to your knowledge, how many cities have probably done this this year?
I, I don't know exactly. My understanding is it's been a, a very small number, but I don't know exactly what it is. I, I haven't personally researched it, but I was told that just a handful of, of cities and counties, those that, that are in the system, have chosen to do it.
Okay, I can give some information. This came from the Retiree Association. Everybody's still in a process on fiscal year seventeen. Harvest Monrovia, Water Sewer and Fire has done it. The Huntsville Utilities Electric, Gas, and Water Systems, I know those are three different boards, but I, I certainly would agree that that's one entity for, for this purpose. Tarkog has done it. Historically, there were four bonuses that were put out. The current one, the current fiscal year, we're still, you know, there's still a lot of vacancies to be filled, but previously, FY fourteen, fifteen, FY zero-eight, FY zero-seven. Madison County Commission was three-for-three, fourteen, fifteen, zero-eight, zero-seven.
Madison County Commission did not do it this year.
Okay, so they are, they're three-for-four. Okay, so they are, they're three for four, and at this point, we are, we are one for three with having done it in '14, '15, but not '08, not '07. In the state of Alabama, Space Rocket Center's done it all three times. Let's see here. Airport Authority, and these are, these are city agencies, small city agencies, I'll grant you that. The Convention Visitors Bureau. So, it's been done, and that's just, that's just here in, in Madison County.
And I guess, just to make it plain, my only issue is not to support this, it's just the fact that unencumbered budget carryover is an ambiguous tagline. There is no way to account for that, and what that will be. If there was, I don't know, I guess the only way, from what I've surmised in today's session, that if we moved as a body to increase the premiums, make an amendment to V, that can account for that seven twenty-eight, but to say that we're going to get that from unencumbered budget carryover, though I have no problem supporting it, I just don't see the physical responsibility in saying, "We will get the money to you as it comes in."
And let me, let me just say, you know, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, eleven hundred and fifty-six employees, averages out to about six hundred and thirty dollars an employee. It means that you will give them one-time gift, and it, it, you know, they, these people have worked hard, they've worked for the city, they're retirees of the city, but it is beyond the contract that we ever had with them in, in what we do. So, it is an additional payment that you're, you are making to them. You know, we are willing to work with you either way that you want to go. If you do do this, you need to give us the power to move the, the retiree insurance back to the sixty-forty plan, and so that we have a balanced budget. You know, balanced budget is a key thing. Every year we come around to about budget time and balanced budget, you know, we have to show revenues, even though they are projected revenues. Revenues have to equal expenditures. You know, we felt like it was better to do it on the insurance side. If you do it as a one-time payment, there's six hundred dollars to each person, then, then we'll, we'll adjust, but we do need to, we need you to give us the power to, to push the insurance up.
Is there a timetable, Ms. Sergeant, is there a timetable when the budget will be closed out for the current fiscal year? There's usually that closeout, and I know there'll be carryover money for encumbered projects already, but when is that supposed to come? Is that early November?
The only items that will come in early November are the encumbered items. The final closeout won't be done until the CAFR is complete, which is March.
And, and let me say this, carryover is not just a bucket that you can pull from. When they look at your, when they look at your budget and look at your budgeting process, they're looking at what you project your revenues to be, what you check, project your expenditures to be, and that you balance that budget. Not that you carried, you know, that you pulled whatever you could get out of last year and put it into this year. They, last year's last year, this year, you know, carryover is just not some bucket that you can just pull out of. It's, it doesn't work that way.
So, I have a couple of thoughts here as I've listened to all of this. One is that this discussion of who else is doing it is a lot like the conversations I used to have with my kids. Just because everyone else is doing it doesn't mean you have to do it. Because we don't know what the rest of their budget looked like. What, what, did their healthcare costs look like? Are they subsidizing their healthcare costs to the, for their retirees to the extent that we are? So, it's unfair to say, "Well, just because they did it, we should do it too." We're, we're providing benefits to our retirees that most organizations don't. We're also looking at a seven hundred and thirty-dollar employee one-time payment that will cost, if, if, if we do use healthcare premiums, it could potentially increase our healthcare premiums per employee anywhere from twenty-four hundred to ninety-six hundred, depending on the numbers that you do. But again, the leverage there is just crazy. I think the thing that concerns me the most is that we will not have a balanced budget, and that's going, there's no way we could have a balanced budget, because we won't know what those numbers, the unencumbered numbers are until next March. And so, we'll just be hanging out there, and that, that's going to impact our bond rating. Again, that will cost us money down the road, way beyond that seven hundred and thirty dollars per employee, and will impact our employees, because we're not going to be able to, to provide for them what we've been able to in the past. But, but I think the most interesting thing I've heard tonight is that when we have looked at, even if, even if it all works out, that unencumbered carryover has not been sufficient in the past to fund this. So, even if it's there, and we use all of it, it's still not going to be enough. And we're going to have to go into the budget somewhere and cut road paving, or who knows what, parks to, to make this happen. It's just, it doesn't work. It just doesn't work.
Madam President, if I, if I could add, part of the challenge that we have, you know, ultimately, as, as each of you know well, you were elected to, to decide whether or not making this payment's appropriate, and that's, and that's, you know, our, our issue on the administration side is that the resolution as written does not actually give us the authority to execute the payment properly. The deadline to send the payment to the state is October 31st. The funding source identified in that resolution will not be available by October 31st. So, we, we will require some other action from council to appropriate the dollars in order to, in order to actually have the authority to execute this, this payment. You know, the, as we've talked about, ideas of do you pull it from some other account, only council has the authority to tell us to move money from, you know, one purpose to another, and so ultimately, we will need another action from council, you know, either tonight or at a, at a, at one of the next two meetings in order to actually meet the state's deadline. We will not be able to execute it legally by the way the resolution's written right now.
Okay. Are we positive that the revenue growth that we have is reasonable, and it's not overly conservative? Can we, could we take the revenue growth that we're projecting, and could it be raised like a quarter of a percent for sales tax?
No, if you, if you look over the last couple of years, the projections we've used have been very accurate. You know, they're never perfect, but they're extremely accurate. And, and to, to just arbitrarily increase the model in order to create space that we don't really have confidence will exist would, 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 would not be good for our budget.
And if I might add, because again, this, that's what's sort of making me uncomfortable with it. Your margin of error, your confidence interval on this would not be seven hun, you don't think you would be off by seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Using the numbers I'm receiving this year, we're tracking almost dead-on to the forecast for the 2017 revenue budget.
Which means that, and it's just layman's terms, so when you guessed from November, or when you guessed for October, you were pretty much on mark, knowing going in, and then it would be hard now to assess that you might be off by millions.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Are you ready to vote?
Please vote.
Okay. All in favor of approving fifteen AL, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Mr. Keith?
Nay.
The motion carries, or, I'm sorry, the motion is, does not carry. We will move on to item, that concludes all our, our business items. Sixteen legal department items and transactions, we have none. It brings us to non-roster communications from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Mr. Piff, please come to the microphone, identify yourself and your address.
Thomas Piff, 11314 Del Crist Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 3583. I had made a request after I met with my councilperson two weeks ago for a particular document, and what I was looking for was the initial documents that dealt with the summit building, and I did, I did get them today. I also requested a copy for each of you. What I did receive, actually, was not one of the initial documents, but the final document. So, that's good to have signed final document. If y'all have a chance to run to ground some of the earlier agreements as they evolved, it would be beneficial for you when you study the LOI for the current plan, because the deal in 2003 was pretty lopsided, and through the efforts of the late Sandra Moon, Bill Kling, and others, it was changed and improved upon for the people of Huntsville. This is a really big stakes deal, and you know it's important, and it's important to me, obviously. So, please, y'all look at the LOI over and keep abreast with it, and if we can find the, I may have it right here, actually, one of the original documents or agreements that had to be improved upon. It'll show you what the developer does and thinks, and you can probably take past record as an indication of future performance. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Piff, is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Is there any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we are adjourned.